Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge with us, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Alderman Franklin.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Here.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. We have several proclamations for tonight, so I'm going to start with Local Government Week, and I'd like to invite City Manager Ratliff, Administrative Services Director Smith, and Mayor Pro Tem Milner to join me down here. So in a little while, we're going to be recognizing some departments of local government. And right now, I want to acknowledge some of the leadership of local government, Administrator Brad Ratliff, Mayor Pro Tem Marcy Milner, and Administrative Director Jeremy Smith. This is the proclamation. Whereas local governments in Missouri make important decisions that affect the lives of all Missourians, and whereas local governments are the level of government closest to the people, and whereas local governments include city councils, county commissions, school boards, among others, and whereas local governments are the ultimate expression of grassroots democracy, and whereas local governments play an essential role in the quality of life in Missouri communities, now therefore I, Judy Bowman, Mayor of Harrisonville, do hereby name May 2nd to 8th, 2021, as Local Government Week in Harrisonville, Missouri, and I urge all Missourians to join me in recognizing local governments as they serve their communities. So congratulations. I appreciate the leadership that you all bring to Harrisonville, the city of Harrisonville, and I just want you all to acknowledge this leadership team. I've got one, Daniel. Thank you. All right. So the next one is Public Works Week, and this will be all our Public Works Department, led by Carl Brooks. So Carl, if you would join me, and I know you have a lot of your staff, so if they could join me, that would be awesome. If you're with Public Works, come on up. What a good-looking bunch. Hi, Cassie. So once we take a picture, you can drop your masks for the picture, okay? So Carl, would you introduce?
Or what, can we just pass the microphone and let them introduce themselves?
Carl Brooks, Director. Director of Public Works.
Reddy Jacobs, Street Department.
Cassie Cunningham, Carl's assistant.
Mike Stewart, Water Plant.
Clayton Dover, Water Plant.
Clifford Holloway, Chief Water Plant Operator.
Lee Darlene, Water Plant.
Mike Newman, Airport Manager.
Chris Arthur, Building Official.
You know, a lot of what these folks do, we don't see because a lot of it's behind the scenes or underground, but they are indeed a critical part of our city because they keep it running. So thank you all. All right, the proclamation says, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Harrisonville, Missouri, to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now resolved, I, Judy Bowman, Mayor, do hereby designate the week, May 16 to 22 of 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution that they make to protecting all of our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed and done at the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, this third day of Mayor 2021. Congratulations to you all. That was a mighty long proclamation, but they deserve every word of it. Thank you all for being here. Carl, thank you for the leadership you bring. Yes, we do want a picture.
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
Get back in there. Picture, 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 picture.
You can drop your masks.
Yep.
Oh, you're going to have to get cozy. Yeah.
All right. One, two, three.
Thought that declined a little bit. That's too much. But that's okay.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Boards, you're going to hear from Carl's team in a little while for their SWAT analysis during work session. Okay. I'm all hydrated again, so I'm ready to read. National Police Week. Good evening, Lieutenant. Good evening, sir. Hello. How are you, how's it so doing? You guys did a really big drug raid this week, didn't you?
Yes.
Officer Johnson. Whoa, awesome. Officer Blakely, how are you? Good. Mr. Rose, how are you, sir?
You're good.
Isn't this a good-looking group, you guys?
Yeah.
Let's see. And Michaela Krantz, I met you at the mayor's Christmas tree when you brought your children up for the tree lighting, didn't I? Yes. Are they doing well? Excellent, excellent. Mr. Kincaid, how are you doing these days? Got your Royals mask on, don't you? I got my Royals blue, you betcha. They're going to do good this year, I think. So National Police Week. Lieutenant Osterberg, you're the man in charge here. Come on up here. So this says, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 9th through the 15th as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Harrisonville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Harrisonville, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the police department in Harrisonville has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, call upon all citizens of Harrisonville and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th through the 15th as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Harrisonville to observe Saturday, May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. I want you to know, I congratulate each one of you, and I salute you, and I humbly thank you for your service to the city of Harrisonville. Alderman Gary Davidson is with us remote, and he's a retired Missouri Highway Patrolman, and I'm just going to ask you, I would have done this if you would have been here, I would have had you up here with us. Do you want to say a few words about law enforcement officers, this group, anybody in particular?
No. Thank you, Mayor, but I really, my internet connection is not very stable, so I don't know how much of it would get through, so if you don't mind, I would like to just maybe save it for the next meeting, and I would love to do it then right following the law enforcement read.
That will be fine. Thank you very much. Congratulations again to all of you. (applause). And if you would like to remove your masks.
He's the shortest one.
All right. One, two, three, and another one. Hold on. Now we've got to go to medical. Don't have those guys?
Fire and EMS. Gosh, they get better-looking all the time. Is that a requirement when you hire them, they have to be good-looking? Who are you, sir?
I'm Brian Russian.
Hi, Brian. Welcome. Glad to see you. And who are you, ma'am?
Katie Carter.
Hi, Katie Carter. Judy Bowman, pleased to meet you. And who are you, sir?
Zach Sirkz.
Hi, Zach. Pleased to meet you.
Nathan Davidson, Captain.
And I know you, I recognize you. You've just recently been promoted. Congratulations. And Chief Myler. Okay, this proclamation is for National EMS Week, May 16th to the 22nd. Whereas Emergency Medical Services Week will be celebrated throughout our nation, May 16 to 22, and whereas emergency medical technicians and paramedics provide critical services through first response, treatment, transport, prevention, and intervention, and whereas the quality care provided may affect a patient's journey throughout their course of treatment, and whereas these professionals may risk personal danger when entering unstable environments to deliver urgent and essential care, often under immense pressure and with little thanks, and whereas the Harrisonville Emergency Services Department employs professional firefighters who are also certified emergency medical technicians or paramedics. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, call upon all citizens of Harrisonville and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 16th through 22, 2021, as EMS Week, and honor those first responders whose bravery and selfless dedication has enhanced the quality of life we all enjoy. Thank you all for the service you provide. So they have to respond in a moment's notice, just like this, so we're so fortunate to have them. Want to do a photo? All right. Well, moving on, Mr. Ratliff, did we have any agenda request forms submitted this week?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. A couple of changes on the agenda that I want to make the board aware of before we move on. We're going to pull the executive session minutes approval for March 1st and April 19th, and put them on next meeting, since Alderman Davidson is not here. And you remember, we want a full board present to approve those, so we'll take those off. And then Council Bill 35 has been removed and will be moved on to the next meeting because the individual needed to get one more signature. So those are some changes. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, and I would ask the board members and the audience to please mute your cell phones at this time. Looking for approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen, the regular meeting, April 19th.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Zaring, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of the approval of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes stand approved as printed. The Board of Aldermen, work session, April 19th. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Zaring. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes of the work session of April 19th stand approved as printed. Then moving on to Council Bill 36.
Council Bill 36 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, approving the appointment of Donna Hotchkiss to the Historic Preservation Committee.
Ms. Hotchkiss is with us in the audience this evening. Most of you know her. She has submitted an application, and that is in your packet. I think she's going to be a great addition to the Historic Preservation Commission. She loves Harrisonville, and she has a lot of knowledge of the history of Harrisonville. She's with her husband Chuck this evening, Chuck who serves the city also on the Board of Zoning Adjustments. So I'm bringing the appointment, the recommendation of Donna Hotchkiss to the Historic Preservation Commission to the board. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Reese. A roll call, please.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 36 is approved and becomes Resolution R 021. Council Bill 37.
Council Bill 37 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, approving the appointment of April McLaughlin to the Historic Preservation Commission.
And April has been on the Historic Preservation Commission for a number of years and is interested in being reappointed, so I bring that recommendation to the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Turner, with a second from Alderman Milner, to approve the reappointment of April McLaughlin to the Historic Preservation Commission. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 37 is approved and becomes Resolution R 022. Council Bill 38.
Council Bill 38 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, placing a moratorium on the collection of city utility connection fees for 25 residential dwelling units in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Arthur, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. When we last met and approved the moratorium on the first 25, back on July 6th of 2020, we also talked a little bit about extending that, and I'm here to ask to see if you'd like to do that. The staff report is a little incorrect, which is a good thing, because I now have 14 permits submitted for single-family residential, and in the planning stages, we now have 11. So we're at our 25. We're, what, eight months out. Last time it took five years to go through 25 permits. Of course, we had somewhat of a recession back then, too. But we also have the possibility now of Glen Eagle opening up. The property's been successfully auctioned, and I anticipate 20 single-family permits to be coming in fairly soon. So if you guys are in agreement and would like to continue this waiver of connection fees, that's what we're here to ask for. Another 25 and keep the thing going, hopefully. Any questions, anybody?
Alderman Zaring.
I was just going to ask if, do we need to do more than 25? Can we do more than 25, or is it best just to come back?
Well, I think we could go either way. I like the 25 at a time. If we're lucky enough to come back, that would be a great thing, and it would tickle me pink to visit with you every three months and ask for 25. I mean, eventually, we'll have to decide our, this is not a permanent thing that we're looking for. For the Glen Eagle subdivision, it's, I listed the three fees that are waived, but in the subdivisions that have rural water district rights, we're not waiving water there. But I think if we go with 25, and if Glen Eagle catches fire, and they really get to going, and we have some more infill coming, then I'd be happy to come back if you'll entertain it again.
Thanks.
You're always welcome, Chris.
Well, I don't know about that.
Especially when you bring good news. I'm just thrilled, you know, we knew that this would jumpstart building in our city, particularly after Mr. Ratliff and I met with the developers and the builders, and we asked them, you know, what would it take to get you building again? And so I think the last time we approved this, those of us that were on the board knew that it was going to work, and so it's just, it's really a thrill to see this happening. So any other questions for Mr. Arthur? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we extend permit fees for another 25.
I second that. Have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff, with a second from Alderman Franklin, to again grant an additional 25 waiver of connection fees. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Thank you. Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay there with the Alderman's internet connection. Council Bill 38 is approved and becomes Resolution R 023. Council Bill 39.
Council Bill 39 is in ordinance, the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, to approve the final plat of Lexington Place, a six-lot subdivision at the northeast corner of Lexington Street and Chestnut Avenue in the city of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, for its authority, Council Bill 039.
Good evening, Mr. Crowe.
Good evening. This application comes to you with unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's Lexington Place, the applicant's Brett Hasty and his partner, Chris Giadini, are present, I think, after I get done introducing it, if you'd entertain some comments from Mr. Hasty. The plat comes, is rezoned, we are replating three lots in a vacated alley into six lots. Three lots will face Chestnut Avenue, three lots will face Lexington. The lots meet the requirements of the R2B zoning district. The lots on Chestnut, the lots on Chestnut will be between 5,000 and 5,500 square feet. The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet in that zoning district. The three lots that will face Lexington are from, are 9,600 square feet in size, and again, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. All the lots meet the minimum width requirement of 50 feet, meter exceed that. One of the things that the, and there is an aerial on page 49 of your staff report that you're probably looking at, of the area being replanted. The plat also vacates, there's an east-west alley, 15-foot alley that we vacated a couple months ago. We retained the easement rights at that time, just in case this plat didn't come through, but the plat has come through, and the plat does vacate the easement that we were retaining for utilities. I have had conversations with three residents that border this plat, they've had concerns. One individual, just immediately to the north of the subdivision on Lexington, was concerned that, was asking and concerned that the homes might be rentals, and they are not, these will be for sale to owners. Also has a concern about, you know, they just want the, when they're developing the lot next to them, that they be respectful of their property, not encroaching on it with piles of this and that, or whatever, and I don't foresee that being an issue. Another applicant who lives on the east side of the creek that falls along the backside of this plat, is basically concerned of supporting her neighbors. And the third neighbor, Kim Chalufus, whose property fronts onto Chestnut, sent me an email this afternoon that I made copies of and had put at your place. Kim, who appeared before the Planning Commission, has concerns, I mean, just briefly, the homes that are proposed are in the mid $250,000 range, that's what they think the market will bear at this point in time. She's concerned about that, and whether or not that will raise the value of the properties, and also raise their taxes. Property values are something, nobody wants to see their values go up until they sell their property, and then they want to get the most that they can get, but in the meantime, you know, it goes up, you pay about 1% of that a year in property tax, and you don't like to see it go up until the very end, but as we all know, you can't have it both ways. But anyway, in the email that Kim has sent to us, just briefly, her concerns are that it's too dense, she says she'd be okay with two to three homes, as opposed to the six, is concerned about... She's concerned about that and whether or not that will raise the value of the properties and also raise their taxes. Property values are something, nobody wants to see their values go up until they sell their property, and then they wanna get the most that they can get. But in the meantime, you know, it goes up, you pay about 1% of that a year in property tax, and you don't like to see it go up until the very end. But as we all know, you can't have it both ways. But anyway, in the email that Kim has sent to us, just briefly, her concerns are that it's too dense. She says she'd be okay with two to three homes as opposed to the six. Is concerned about a row of trees being removed, noise, traffic, and then I already talked about her concerned about the price of the homes. What I shared with the three property owners that border this when I went out and met with them originally before this went to Planning Commission is that this meets our requirements. We have a fifty-foot minimum lot width. We have a 5,000-square-foot lot size. This meets our requirements, and it's primarily for that that we're recommending approval. Planning Commission recommended approval. One of the stipulations, there's five stipulations, one of which is that between now and when we sign the plat, the applicant, who has already had a stormwater study done by Sam Styron, that they will have to show how they will be handling the increase in runoff. Now, the increase in runoff is very minimal. It's only one CFS, the difference between pre-development and post-development. It's not very much, but we're asking them to come back and show the city engineer for his approval how the stormwater would be managed and detained. With that, the applicants here and would like to make some comments, and then they'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hasty and Mr. Kiyadini, come to the podium.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's good to see you again, Brent. We're good.
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Chris Kiyadini. I live in, let's see, I live in Gary's Ward, Summer Ward, four. I'm in the old bird edition. I've lived in Harrisville for twenty-one years. My kids were born and raised here. I don't, I'm not from here, my wife's not from here, but our kids are born and raised here. And so this is our home. So I'm in front of you tonight to talk about, a little bit about Lexington Place. Most of you have read the staff report. You know what we're talking about here. I just wanted to share a few things with you. So this was platted back in the original plat, the city, when the city was founded. And the property that we have agreed to purchase from Ken and Brenda Spear contains just over one acre. It's about 155 foot deep on Chestnut, and it's about 287 feet length on Lexington. So when, we bought it with the intent to split it into five lots. Three of the lots would be larger. Those are the three that face Lexington. They'd be roughly 9,000-plus square feet each, which is actually larger than the lot that I live on in a post-World War II suburban-type, single-family residential subdivision. The other three lots would face Chestnut, and they will be lesser in size, but they will meet all of the city's zoning ordinance and subdivision requirements. So our goal is to split it into five lots. I'm sorry, six, excuse me, six. Since I've been in this town, I've noticed that there's opportunities for infill development. I'm on the Planning Commission and have been on the Planning Commission for years, and the city engaged a consultant a number of years ago to look at how we could, as a city, develop the older parts of the city with newer homes, because there were lots that were being unproductive. They were vacant. There was no houses on there. They weren't generating an amount of taxes that was amenable. And so the city hired a consultant, and that consultant came up with the zoning categories R1B and R2B. This particular piece of property happens to be zoned R2B, which would actually, I'm allowed by right to put duplexes on there, but I don't wanna do that, right? We wanna build single-family homes. The intent, our intent, this is Brett Hasty, for those of you guys who don't know Brett. Brett's from Cass County, grew up in Belton, he lives down in Archie, he's a home builder, okay? And he's been building homes for twenty years. He's currently building homes down in Archie on the old golf course down there. So our intent is to build market-rate homes that you could consider them to be high-end entry-level homes or move-up homes. You guys all know what's going on with the price of construction materials in the last fourteen months. You know, a two-by-four that cost you 270 is now about four times that. A sheet of plywood's $100, okay? We're talking about nice, quality, single-family homes that we would sell to owners that will occupy them. We're not rental property owners. That's not our mindset. That's not our mentality. That is not what we wanna do. We're here to provide top-quality housing to add to the housing stock in the city, okay? So with that, I wanna talk about one real brief thing. I know that we hired Sam Styron, I've known Sam for twenty-some years when I was Director of Public Works for the county. We hired Sam to do, to meet the city's regulations to provide the stormwater drainage analysis for us, and his analysis shows that the post-development condition increases the stormwater runoff by one cubic foot per second, one. So there's been some discussions that have happened between Sam and Ted, and Sam called Carl today and talked to Carl a little bit. We fully intend, as the developers, to make sure that we're gonna detain that post-development runoff on the individual six lots by a variety of methods. And I'm not here to speak for Sam or Carl or anybody else, but there's things that can be done on the site, whether it's permeable pavement, rain gardens, rain barrels, individual, what I would call individual lot detention areas. You can do that when you grade the final site and put some of these things into place that will more than retain one CFS. I'm pretty confident that there will be actually less runoff on the site post than what happens now, just by the measures we put on site. So with that, I'll stop talking and Brett can say whatever he wants to say about the houses and stuff.
Well, really, there's not much for me to say, but from, you know, a home builder's standpoint, it's very important for me to address the issues of who I'm gonna be selling my homes that live next to. So I take it very serious with, you know, the email that she's got on there, and there's a couple of things that I wanna address, and I'm just not sure she's grasping the whole. I mean, she says in here that it would be all right if it were $150,000. We're building 1,450-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath. You'd be crazy to do anything less than that. Nobody wants less than three bedrooms, right? Nobody wants less than two baths. We're selling them right now for $245,000 in Archie, Missouri, on a slab. And part of that isn't because they're that nice necessarily. That's where we're at. That's what the price is up to. If I could build a house and provide affordable housing to a young family for 150,000, I would love to do it. I just don't, it's not feasible. So where we're at today, and you'll find in Glen Eagle, because I've kept my ear to that pretty close, those are gonna be well over 350, $400,000. So it's just where we're at. It would be hard for me to deliver something to the neighborhood that would be less than 250. So that's kinda where I wanna address that. We're not trying to overprice the neighborhood, okay? And unfortunately, taxes are what they are. I mean, that's how the city survives, right? So, but I do want it to be known to the board that, I take it very serious that I want my homeowners to get along with the neighbors, and it's not their fault if someone's upset. So, you know, we've gone as much as we can to make sure we're addressing everything. I know in the planning and zoning meetings, her concerns with drainage were not from that side of the ditch, it was from the other side, and then east of the police station, which has nothing to do with this lot. This lot's on the other side. So I think that's about the only thing I wanna address there with, as far as, I haven't heard from any other neighbors. They haven't been to the meetings. Noise and traffic, I don't know if there's anything that could be done about that, but I don't know what extra noise and traffic there would be. But our intention's to build a low-maintenance, as affordable housing as we can without cutting corners. And I know when we started this process, I sent Roger to, you know, my Facebook page. We post updates of pre-construction, post-construction. We keep the streets clean. I've got a street sweeper every day. We clean them up. I mean, we try to do, we want, we, this isn't gonna be our last one, okay? So we want the city, not only the board, the planning and zoning, but also the community to like to have us around, right? So our intention is to do this as nice as possible. They are gonna be tight, but they're not tighter than the subdivision that we did in Archie. So, I mean, they were literally six feet, six feet from property line, so twelve feet overall. So these are gonna be better than that. The way that it works, based on the requirements of the city, we've got three big lots. Those are probably gonna bring more money. The houses could probably be a little bigger. The three on Chestnut are gonna be smaller. So with that, I would say, if you have any questions, we're gonna use that high-dollar lumber that unfortunately is all you can use right now, so.
Before I open it up to the board for questions, I wanna just make clarification for the board. You heard Mr. Kiyadini talk about being on the Planning and Zoning Commission and being the chairman of that. I want you to know that at the last meeting where this was discussed and approved by Planning and Zoning, he did recuse himself and he left the room. So he was not part of the discussion nor part of the vote. I just wanna make sure that the board was aware of that. And now I'll open it up for any questions that the board has. Alderman Milner?
And just out of, just for our knowledge, by looking at your drawings, the lots really are not a whole lot different in size from what's already there and built on and everything else. So it's not like you're changing the whole scope of the neighborhood.
In fact, quite the opposite. We've got two more lots up north, two more blocks that's also zoned the same zoning. By the nature of the zoning restrictions, the house can really, on that small a lot, can really only look one way. Front porch, garage setback. We're gonna do a Craftsman style. It's gonna look like a house that was probably built seventy, eighty years ago. It's just gonna be new, you know? So newer stuff on the inside that you can't see from the street, but, yeah.
Good, good.
Alderman Reese?
Yes, a couple.
You wanna take your mask off?
Part, oh.
Can you remove your mask? It's just easier for people to understand. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure really whether this is for y'all or for Roger. How wide are these lots gonna be from property line to property line?
Well, the three on Lexington, what are they, sixty-seven? Sixty-two. The one on the corner of Chestnut and Lexington is fifty-five, because there's a setback restriction because it's on the corner, and then the others are fifty.
Okay. Question to Roger. Is that different in different parts of the city?
No, the variety that they're showing is the same variety that you would see around it. Because I've looked at, when we were analyzing this plat and looking at some of the lots around it, I mean, there were some that were fifty, some that were fifty feet. Probably the majority were around sixty feet, but you had the same variety in the, and I'm talking about in the older part of town.
Okay. And so let's say that you went across town. You still have the same restrictions for how wide they have to be?
Well, in your newer subdivisions that were coming into being when ranch-style homes were starting to take off, you know, your lots are a lot wider. I mean, seventy by 120 is a standard size, but these lots, by their design, their width, their depth, are compatible with what's around them in the older part, the original part of town.
So there's not like a code or something in the code books or something?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there is a code. It was primarily the two things that both of us have talked about in terms, there's a minimum lot width per the zoning district, and then there's a minimum lot size, and this subdivision meets those two requirements.
Okay, so per zoning district, they would be different?
Yes.
Okay. Second thing, is it the same as from the house to property line? From the edge of the house to the property line, how much distance does there have to be?
Yeah, the front yard setback, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-five.
Okay, I'm sorry, going the other way.
The side yard setbacks?
Right, curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, from, no. If this is the house, this is the road. Okay, then from the house out to that property line, on the side, side to side, right? How much has to be between the house and the property line?
Ten feet.
Ten feet?
Five feet on each side of the property line.
Okay, five on each side.
I think you're doing twelve, that's what I heard, six, six feet on each side.
Now, is that another thing that's per zone?
Yes.
Okay. I think there was one more. Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. And for you folks, I know you were talking about the erosion effect. I know that there's a, I've lived close to, I'm not right there, but I'm close to there, and I see that ditch, and for some reason, all these years, I've thought it was a little stream. So apparently it's a ditch. Apparently it's a ditch, yeah. And it does look deep, and it does, I can kind of understand some concerns for erosion. And I know you spoke to that, and somehow I missed part of that.
What I was trying to get across is that, you know, we're doing everything that the city is asking us to do by hiring an engineer to do the stormwater drainage analysis, to come up with how much additional runoff there is in what they call the post-developed condition. So the way the rules work very shortly is, there's so much runoff in a pre-developed condition. You increase development, you have more impervious surface, so it generates more stormwater runoff. The difference between those two conditions, between pre and post, you have to make allowances on your site so that you detain that amount of runoff for a certain period of time. The difference between the pre and post-developed conditions for this piece of property is one CFS.
Okay.
And so our charge is to show the city engineer and the public works director how we're gonna retain that one CFS on the entire one acre split amongst six lots.
Okay. And I do understand that part of it. She has something here about the removing of the tree line.
I can speak to that. So a hundred years ago, when the city platted this piece, these blocks, there is a fifteen-foot platted alley that runs north and south, all right? So it's on the Chestnut side. It would be the rear of the lots that would face Lexington. It runs north and south. There was never an alley, a functional alley there. It has always functioned as a drainage ditch, and it happens to be located in the city's platted right-of-way. That's the ditch that she's talking about.
Okay, does that come clear up to Chestnut?
Yes, ma'am, and there's a drainage structure underneath Chestnut as well.
Okay.
So I think what the lady's talking about is the tree line that, on our side of the property, that runs along that creek. It's a lot of scrubby undergrowth that's nasty-looking, needs to be cleaned out. We're gonna clean it out.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for either gentleman? Seeing no questions, this is an ordinance. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to suspend the rule on Council Bill thirty-nine and move it to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zerring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule on Council Bill thirty-nine and advance it to its second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
You may not know you're in.
All right, we'll just record Alderman Davidson as absent that vote. Second reading.
Council 039 is an ordinance to the Harrisville Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, to approve final plat of Lexington Place, a six-lot subdivision at the northeast corner of Lexington Street and Chestnut Avenue in the City of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri. Second reading, Council 039.
And a roll call, please.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zerring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Okay, just recording him as absent.
Okay, just recording him as absent again. So Council Bill 39 is approved and becomes ordinance 3542. Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff?
Uh, yeah, we have a town hall this Saturday morning at nine o'clock, so everybody's welcome to come out. We'll have superintendent of the Harrisonville School District, along with a student and a teacher, talking about what they've gone through the last year, COVID, and, and how they've overcome all of that, so, uh, that's, that's the plan. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Um, nothing for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Franklin?
I wanted to remark about, uh, we were driving around Saturday night, and Dale and I saw all the kids out about town, having all their pictures, their prom pictures taken out at the park, out on the square, uh, really taking advantage of some of our sites and areas around town. So, I thought it was really nice, and, uh, all the guys and gals looked absolutely gorgeous walking in. And I also wanted to remind everybody that this weekend is the Junk in the Trunk, the first one, and it starts at seven and go, I mean, it starts at four, I'm sorry, and goes till seven. Uh, they are going to have a food truck, and they are going to have a bluegrass band, so come out and join us, it ought to be a good time.
Thank you. Alderman Zaring?
Uh, yeah, just going to, uh, one, one point out, electric company again, still, still impresses me. Um, they were out in our neighborhood here about a little over a week ago, a tree had fallen on somebody's line, and, and I tell you what, they had to cut the electricity to get it off of the line, and it took them like no time to do that. Before I started getting calls, they were getting it back on, turned back on, so, can't talk, you know, can't thank the staff enough. Uh, I go back to, it helps us make decisions with their recommendations. The time that you all take, uh, to get down to the, the intimate details to brief us, and by the time it gets to us, we can pretty much count on, uh, what you guys are coming up with, so we appreciate that as well. Um, and I'd like to thank, uh, all those that are volunteering, volunteering for commissions, those types of things, I mean, spending your time that, uh, to improve our, our city, and without you, we couldn't, you know, again, the city couldn't accomplish a lot of the things that we do. Uh, thanks to these two gentlemen here, you know, again, a, a big part of improving our city, uh, and doing it the right way, so we, we appreciate all of that. And that's all I have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate how you are always expressing appreciation to staff and to volunteers and to your fellow Aldermen. We can always count on you for good, positive comments, and I want you to know from me, I appreciate that. Thank you. Alderman Milner?
Um, just to touch a little bit on, uh, what Mike was just talking about, um, again, the building, it's so exciting to see new building, especially in older areas, um, kind of give it a little bit of a facelift and a little bit more vitality, and, um, you know, being closer to kind of to the downtown area, I, I think that's going to be a real draw for some people who are trying to get away from big cities and coming into smaller communities, and they're within walking distance of so many things, so, um, kudos to you guys for your forethought on that. Um, and just, like, like Alderman said, you know, I don't think we give staff and, and the credit that they deserve a lot of times, you know, it's, it's easy to complain and it's easy to find fault, but y'all are in here in the trenches every day. We, you know, fortunately, we are only sitting here twice a week, or twice a month, and we don't hear all of it, but thank you all for everything you do, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
Uh, just one thing, the, our last rain event, uh, I was kind of curious about the creek down by Trade Fair, and so I went down to the Z, and actually ran into, uh, Alderman Davidson, he was down there also, so, I mean, we were both thinking about the creek and the water, and the creek was pretty full on both sides and stuff. Um, I still think there's a lot more work that needs to be done on the other side of the highway, and we're, but that's getting out of town, so I don't know how we're going to get that addressed, but that's something that we definitely need to look at and work with other departments and get a resource together to get this figured out, because it really wasn't that big of a rain vent, not like what we had in the previous years, but the creek filled up pretty fast, and so, so we still got stuff there.
Yeah, we're still having those conversations with Mo Don.
Yeah.
Who still has the same message, they don't have any money, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, but thank you for going down there and checking into that, I appreciate that. Anything else?
And that's it.
Okay. Alderman Mills?
Um, I visited with one of the milling guys this morning, and so from the milling aspect, I don't know about staff, he thought things were going great. And, uh, hope to finish up today with no rain, but after, they'll work tomorrow. So that's all I know about milling. But, uh, looking forward to your trash, haven't heard about trash tonight, and, uh, guess that's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davidson has rejoined us, he does have connection now. Um, Alderman Davidson, anything from you, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, we know that you'll make up for it next meeting, right?
I plan on it.
I figured as much, thank you. Mr. Ratliff, City Administrator, report.
Uh, yes, we just completed the brush drop-off on April 29th and May 1st, had a lot of good activity with that. Uh, we still have the upcoming springwide cleanup for the 7th and 8th of this month, and also the House Hold Hazardous Waste Event, uh, which is May 22nd for that. And if you all remember, that's in conjunction with Mid-American Regional Council, and it's our turn to host that, and so it's always good to be able to have it, uh, that local for us, because it, it's a benefit, uh, for a lot of our residents. Um, talking about stormwater, we've had some, uh, street department formed, imported, and backfilled some sidewalk completed on the south end of King Street, and the stormwater sidewalk project. Uh, they also completed the north end, that includes the placement of three catch basins and curb and another 40 feet of sidewalk. Uh, so the department's goal, uh, to get that completed in June, uh, is going to look like they're going to meet that, uh, goal. Maintenance, uh, the high-water warning, uh, uh, system that was located on the railroad underpass on North Commercial Street, had some maintenance work done on it. Um, the Glen Eagle subdivision that was talked about earlier, staff met with Water District Four. If you all recall, there was a concern, uh, that the Water District had about the, um, the line, uh, that would be under the 11-acre lake that we're going to be creating. Uh, staff felt like they had a very positive interaction with Water District Four, and we're thankful that Water District Four wants to work with us, uh, on, on that, and, um, our main goal with them is to make sure, as we communicated very clearly with them, that when, um, the housing permits come in, when the closing of these properties happen, we want to make sure that we're not waiting on anything. And so, uh, they agreed with us, and we're going to have a memorandum of understanding between one of, uh, each one of us probably be at your next meeting, uh, with a part of that, uh, just to make sure that we all know where each other are, and there's no problems down the road. Uh, because the worst thing can happen is as development's going, that there be some kind of problem there. And so, I think Carl and, and Ted and Chris, who met with them, uh, last week, last Wednesday, and so they thought it was a, a, a very positive meeting with Water District Four. So if Water District Four is listening, we're thankful, uh, that they want to work with us on that. We did, uh, the board was, uh, interested in what it would cost, uh, to lengthen the runway to, we could have jets at the airport, if, it'll be $5,750,000 to do that, so, Mr. Mauer's writing a check, and, uh, to be able to get that accomplished. And, uh, so, we wanted to make sure you all knew that, and also remember, uh, Carl and Ted are working, uh, with those grant dollars on the improvement of the existing, uh, that we could get around for a million dollars. And so, just, that's just to upgrade the existing infrastructure that we have there, not in, in addition to, uh, to that. So, we're going to keep working on that, and I think with a lot of the American Recovery Act money that's out there, we're going to be checking every tree, uh, and shaking on it. Um, the Harrisonville Spillway Pipe Rehabilitation Project, uh, the engineers are resubmitting engineering design, uh, Carl and Ted didn't like their numbers and made them go back to the drawing board, and so, um, they're going to be doing that. South alignment of the sewer study, uh, is, uh, completed, and one of the things I wanted to, um, tell the mayor and the board, I know the mayor's aware of some of this, um, anytime you deal with residents in getting easement, it is never fun, and they never quite hear what you told them. And so, information comes back different than what staff has communicated to them. And so if you hear things, I thank Alderman Mills for calling me to tell me about one incident that he heard, and there's always the other side of the story, which is staff, and staff always does our best to communicate with residents, work with residents, but as you know, some of them aren't really happy to have the government around, you know, Ronald Reagan's, you know, fearful nine words along from the government, and I'm here to help, and people get really nervous with that. So, if you hear things, feel, feel free to shoot me an email or call me, and I'll get information, and Carl definitely wants to, to know if there's things being said that's contrary to what we're communicating. And so we appreciate Alderman Mills giving us the heads-up on, on, uh, one of those incidents, uh, because it quite didn't shake out the way that they told him about it. So it's funny how those things happen. Um, then the 2021 Street and Curb and Gutter Project, contractor, uh, has completed the base bid work on Park Avenue and begun on the Twin Oaks Drive, uh, for the 2020 asphalt overlay project, contractor started milling and the process on Land Avenue and Panzley Asphalt this week, as was pointed out. And, uh, in the 2020, uh, overlay, uh, project that we're doing with Woolpave, they plan to start that, uh, part of the project in July. And so, we're having, we're pushing forward with all those outdoor, uh, pool improvements. The aver, they advertised on April the 29th, and the bids are to come in on May the 20th, uh, on that, so we're hopeful, uh, to get that completed. There is a pre-bid meeting that staff will be having with contractors on the 7th of May. And then, uh, for Lake Luna and the City Lake Projects, uh, the lakes continue to be lowered to prevent any, uh, breach. Uh, the plan of lowering the lake of two feet, uh, by the opening drain valve, it seems to be working, and so we're, we're still hopeful with that. Um, the Harrisonville Carers Coalition had a meeting, uh, and I want to really compliment the, the chief and, uh, the staff, and what they, and the presentation that they did for Cory Turner's family, and they, that family will be coming this next meeting, uh, to the Board of Aldermen as well. Uh, it was really a good activity and a good, uh, thing to see. Uh, chief met with Judge, uh, Legrosso, uh, and Officer Kelly from the Cass Career Center, uh, this last Monday. They, one of the things that we have to ensure is on the bailiffs, it can't be a police officer doing the bailiff activity, and so we are working with the Cass Career Center, because there are some kids that need those, continue education for court activities, and so we're working with them, uh, to be able to supply, uh, bailiffs. And that, and that doesn't mean they're part of security, but it's doing more of the paperwork, uh, portion of it. Police Department's still providing, uh, the security for that. And, um, then we had, um, the spring, uh, biannual prescription drug, uh, take-back, it always amazes me with these poundages, 217.4 pounds, uh, prescription, uh, medicine was turned in during that event. That's, that's just mind-blowing to me, uh, that that much was turned in, so we're, we're thankful for, uh, the Police Department, all those that were involved with that activity. As well, EMS is seeing their call numbers increasing, um, and transfers are up, uh, very few COVID transfers and calls that we're receiving anymore. Um, Fire Cat was in town, tested all the department's hoses, and, uh, a few of those hoses failed the test, and they'll have to replace, uh, those hoses as, as needed. Um, and then, um, the chief is working with some COVID funding for the, uh, city buildings that there's available, uh, grant funds for, for air filtration, uh, for our systems. Uh, Code's Department, all four locations of the school district are doing their projects, but we also had another, uh, additional project come in, they're doing the bleach, bleacher additions, uh, that's, and that's not a part of the, first part of the agreement that you are doing, but they're going to be expanding there. Uh, Aldi's, uh, store project, fire protection system, 95% complete, 75% complete on the refrigeration. Um, the site utilities are 90% complete, and they've revised their opening, uh, for June 1st now, uh, so due to the weather. So, then, uh, staff's been contacted, um, by an architect for, um, the commercial shell building down on 109, uh, 1,009 Eastern. I know some of you get questions about that, that's the building at the end of the Kodak Sack where the car wash is, and, um, they had an architect submit some plans for a finish for one tenant, for a auto repair shop that's wanting to lease the entire building there. So, it was niggly looking like it was looking some type of storage, but it looks like an auto, uh, repair shop that's going to lease, uh, that building. Chris gave you the numbers, we'll all go on the, um, uh, building permits and how they're increasing. Uh, Parks Department getting ready to do a lot of activities out at the, uh, community center, you're going to maybe get some complaints, we hope you don't. May 10th through the 17th, the upstairs of the community center will be closed, because they'll be doing, uh, duck work cleaning, so all the duck work will be starting to be cleaned. You got to clean it before you paint it, and so, we're trying to make sure to get that completed. Uh, fitness equipment downstairs, uh, auction is May 3rd through the 26th, uh, fitness equipment upstairs, May 26th through the June 23rd. Flooring installed downstairs, June 1st, and upstairs, July 15th. Uh, and the new fit, fitness equipment will be delivered, uh, July the 5th. And, uh, we've interviewed the, for a, a facility maintenance position, if you all remember, in the budget, you told us to hire in first quarter and third quarter, we were hesitant, like I told you we would be, so we're now at the end of second quarter, and, uh, getting ready to start a position on that. We'll wait, uh, into the third quarter on the second position. Uh, and then grant submitted, uh, D N R, a grant for a non-playground scrap tire grant application for new picnic tables and benches, uh, at the Aquatic Center, uh, for April the 28th. And then, uh, trash complaints, I'm getting there. For the week of April the 5th, we had 37. The week of April the 12th, we had 18. The week of April the 19th, we had 58. And last week, we had 13. I met with, um, the owner, uh, Friday, along, Jeremy was there and Daniel was there. I want to give kudos to Daniel, because he has spent hours responding to people, uh, on those complaints, and, uh, trying to do a lot of the coordination. Um, he had a truck with equipment, that they couldn't get the equipment on, that's why he was having problems the week, that they were, um, behind. Uh, he does admit that he was, uh, he should have used social media, and to explain and to contact the city, to try to explain to the residents. Um, he has said that we won't hear any more problems, but I told him that he will have to come to you all on May 17th to discuss the problems and discuss the plans, and to have a hearing with you all. So, May 17th, he will be before you all for a decision and discussion, uh, on, on that. So, that'll be the meeting, that you will have your opportunity to ask questions and, uh, bring things forward to him at that time. Uh, first utility shut-off, they did with the new software, Jeremy said it was exhilarating. Um, we, uh, his IT department, overall patch and compliance, and are, uh, is currently at 96% compliance with 25 servers and 115 clients reporting in. Um, starting to roll out the two-factor off, authentication, uh, security for our Microsoft 365 account at City Hall. Starting to roll out the two factor authentication security for our Microsoft 365 account at City Hall. So then he gets to hear all of us complain about that. And then we submitted contracts for the 20,000 of historical preservation plan grant with the Missouri Historic Preservation Office. And Roger held a kickoff meeting with Gould Evans on the comprehensive plan project. We're going to be gathering requests and information over this next two weeks and working with ETC on the citizen satisfaction survey. We're hoping to get that out this month and be complete in July. I'll be emailing you all the last questions that were done in 2014. And then we're, our staff have updated those questions and added those and we'll get them to you all to review. To make sure that it has everything that you have or that you desire to have on there. Right now, the department heads have reviewed it and have given Roger their comments back. And then once he gets that put to me, probably this week, we'll be sending that out to you all for review. I think that's it. We're busy.
We are busy, aren't we? Thank you, Brad. Dennis, questions from the media, nothing tonight? Okay. I have some things I want the members of the board to make sure to have in your calendars. Alderman Dorhoff has talked about the town hall meeting on May the 8th. That's this coming Saturday at 9:00 AM at the Harrisonville United Methodist Church. It is Superintendent Paul Menching and the student and the teacher that Mr. Menching is bringing with him are Laura Fries and her very talented son, George. If you've read the great article that was in the South Cast Tribune about George, George was one of 200 students in the country to be awarded a stamped scholar scholarship, a full ride at MU with significant funds for his own research lab. And he's, he is way over my head on all things about botany and yeah. But they're amazing people. Laura is the gifted education teacher at Harrisonville High School. She was the one who took the position from Donna Fauch when Donna retired. Donna was the one who actually created that program at Harrisonville. And so I'm just thrilled and very eager to hear what Laura and George have to share with us on Saturday. So I would encourage all of you to attend. May the 20th at the Chamber is going to be my state of the city address to the Chamber and to anyone who wishes to attend. I would love to see the board members there and I think the department heads are going to be there. So it'll be lunch at the Chamber, it's Branding Iron's potato bar. So that'll be at 11:45 on May the 20th. If you haven't RSVP'd, please do so to Kristen so she can have a head count. And I hope to see you all there. Let's see. I had appointed a group of four aldermen to be a work group and meet with Joe Lauber to begin to study the Chapter 353 program and how we were going to implement that here in Harrisonville. Mr. Lauber has had some significant illness in the family and so that has just been delayed slightly until he gets back to work. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. I want to thank the Cass Career Center for the great job that they did on the step. If you notice, when you stepped up on the dais tonight, you didn't have to raise your knee quite as high. They built that step for us, they put the railing on both sides. So we don't have to worry about aldermen rolling off of the dais or falling down the steps. So you know, Cass Career Center and Harrisonville School, that's one of those strategic partnerships that we have that I value so much. And Cass Career Center, I could just go on for hours about how I feel about them and the opportunities that they bring to young people. And then lastly, I'm wearing blue, it's perhaps royal blue, but tonight it's wildcat blue. I want to congratulate all of our graduates who will be graduating this Friday evening. It's been a very strange year and I just commend the teachers and the parents and the coaches and the students for what they've accomplished this year. So that is all I have. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment from the board.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Milner to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll take a five minute break and then we'll come back for work session, we are adjourned, thank you.
We just wait all the way till the end to hear about the trash, man, you did that on purpose, man. You know, it's kind of the suspense leading up and.
I was like, I hope he's going to say anything about that.
If I can have the alderman returned to council chambers, please? I'm going to call this work session to order, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Turner.
He's in the hall.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Davidson. Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you, we do have a quorum. I don't think Alderman Davidson is with us and Alderman Turner is making his way here. So our discussion items tonight, we have the SWAT analysis from the water treatment plant. And with us, we have Public Works Director Carl Brooks and several of his water operators. And Mr. Brooks told me that he shut down the water plant early tonight so that these gentlemen could join us. And he's going to introduce each.
Water treatment plant is. And it does look in very good condition. That's because in 2018, millions of dollars were spent at the water treatment plant to make it look like that. And you know, the mayor was reading numerous proclamations tonight. And there's actually one other one that I tried to sneak in, but of course Carl's always late. But it's also National Drinking Water Week. So I just want to commend these four gentlemen that, you know, you go to the tap, you turn that water on, whether it's day, night, raining, snowing, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that water's there. And the only time that there's a problem, when you don't have water, assuming you paid your bill, is we've probably got a major break. And that would be bad, but these guys do a great job. Next. The mission statement of the water treatment plant is to provide clean and safe drinking water that meets or exceeds all state and federal standards to the residents and businesses of Harrisonville. And I got to say, our staff is one of our strengths. So what I'd like to do is introduce Cliff Holloway. He is a License A Water Treatment Plant Operator. He gets that certification through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. And Cliff has been a License A operator for 14 years and he's been the chief operator for the last two and a half years. So I think at this time, the mayor probably will ask you a question or two and then you can sit down.
So Cliff, what do you like the most about working at the water treatment plant and being the chief operator?
Just that we get to help the city out. I don't talk a lot, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it is very nice board. It's always good to see our employees and be able to put a face with a name. So thanks for your service to Harrisonville, we really appreciate it. All right.
Our next operator is Lee Darling. And Lee has been a License A operator for 20 and a quarter years, all with the city of Harrisonville. And I think that's his tenure as well at the city of Harrisonville, so.
So do you like to talk?
I'm a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Well, tell us a little.
I'm kindergarten because I wouldn't talk to the teacher.
Oh, I see, I see. So tell us a little bit about what you do and what your favorite thing is of what you do.
Well, my favorite thing is get to do something different every day. No two days are alike out there. You think it'd be routine, but every day is different. You know, you walk in there and the tower may be almost empty or you walk in there and it's half full. So there's different ways of operating every day. And then we get to go to training classes and learn new things about water chemistry and stuff.
Awesome.
Keep our licenses.
Awesome.
That's a lot of fun.
And that's important, you know, that you keep the license and keep the chemicals right and keep the water tasting good.
So important.
So you're enjoying that new plant then?
Yes, yeah, so much.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Darling? Okay, thanks so much for all you do for us, we appreciate that. Okay, Carl?
And our, and our next operator is Mike Stewart. And Mike has a B license from DNR. And he's been with us a short time, 32 and three quarters a year. I'm sorry, he's had this license for that long. He's been at Harrisonville for 12 and a half and he's spent his previous 20 years down at Drexel running a water treatment plant, so.
And I know Mike and I know Mike likes to talk, so.
I enjoy the guys that I work with tremendously. We all work good together, we have to. 365 days a year, we teach each other a lot. We make, we work when nobody else, when everybody else is on vacation. Holidays, we make it work. They like what we do or we wouldn't do it, I guess.
And that whole camaraderie thing is so important because you are depending on each other.
Good people.
Absolutely.
It's really good to have a good job like this, thank you very much.
Great, we appreciate you. Any questions or comments, Alderman Dorhoff?
Do have a quick question. So I see, you know, A license, B license, D license, what's the difference between those?
There's not a whole lot of difference between the A and B.
It's just experience, there's different levels for how many years of experience you have for different licenses.
Okay.
You know, a C is a year and a half, a B is three and a half and a A is five and a half. Then you have to take the corresponding tests for each license.
All right, well, good. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, guys.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, Alderman?
And I wish Dennis was still here with the paper. And I, I don't think most citizens like myself, before I sat on here, understand. People don't understand, the public doesn't understand, to run this city, the experience. the experience that staff has. And what, I mean, they're not just, you know, some kid that decided he didn't want to work downtown Kansas City and went to work for the water department. People don't understand that. These are well-educated, very professional, they know their trade. And I think this would be such an important factor to put out sometime in our publications of the background and the history and the training that staff actually goes through within the city. I mean, they're not just a random Joe off the street that comes to work here.
We never stop going to school.
Yeah.
I mean, we always go, we have to renew our licenses. So we have to do 30 years, I mean, 30 hours every three years. So we're always going to school.
I just think.
Learning new regulations, and that's what, we get to travel around to different water organizations, that's what we do.
I think that's such an important factor that people do not realize.
Thank you.
Excellent point. Mr. Brooks?
And Cliff, what level does DNR, what license does DNR require our treatment plant to have as a chief operator?
As a chief operator, you have to have an A.
You have to have an A?
To run the, to actually be in charge of this.
All right. So I've learned something. I can go home now. Our last employee, not the least, is Clayton Dover. And Clayton has his D license, and he's been with Harrisonville almost three years. And he's obviously the newest kid on the block, but we hope that we have Clayton around for a very long time.
Where'd you come here from, Clayton?
Before I worked here, I was on the other side of the water world, installing water mains and stuff for a local company.
Okay.
All the stuff on the other side.
Yeah.
I kind of got into the water trade or whatever and decided to apply for the city. And I just got out there, and I had no idea what it was like, what it took. And then I, you know, of course, got all my training and working on getting more training. This summer, I'll be going to train and get my B license.
Excellent, excellent. Awesome. Well, I think Alderman Milner made a really good point. You know, we know that firefighters and paramedics and EMTs and police officers have to get training and have to maintain their training. And oftentimes, we fail to realize that that also applies to our water operators, too. So thank you, guys. Appreciate what you do. Mr. Brooks?
Next. Our strengths, as I mentioned, our staff is one of our strengths. And the water treatment plant at the city of Harrisonville is staying very compliant with all the DNR regulations. And we'll talk a little bit later about all these tests they have to do to stay in compliance with the regulations. And the current employees are very knowledgeable with their job, and they stay up to date with ever-changing regulations. I think you heard that from them saying that. Next, please, Jeremy. This is a hydraulic schematic of the water treatment plant, and I'll just try to briefly go through this. And Jeremy, I didn't tell you ahead of time, but is there any way you can toggle both the schematic and the next slide up there at the same time? So they can kind of get a picture of the overall site plan and the schematic? If not, if not, I'll keep going, and if he pulls it up, great. But the whole process starts out at Lake Harrisonville. And we talked earlier this year about there was a problem out at Lake Harrisonville, 203rd Street. You know, the county's road was about ready to collapse, so, you know, that's why we were interested in it. But the raw water comes out of Lake Harrisonville, and we have 38,000 linear feet of a 16-inch pipe that runs between the lake and the water treatment plant. As the water comes into the treatment plant, the first thing they do is they hit it with a dose of ozone. And ozone is basically a disinfectant. And they do test for it right up, right up at the beginning to make sure they didn't put too much ozone into it. The next process is, you know, they're adding other chemicals, and it goes through a rapid mix chamber ahead of the primary clarifier. And in both the primary clarifier and the secondary clarifier, they're adding polymer. And that's basically adding like a flock, and it attaches to the solids that are floating around that are suspended. And, you know, we want that stuff to settle out because we don't want to drink that. So they add that polymer stuff, and it gets it to settle down. And of course, that sludge that settles down goes out to a sludge-holding basin. And after it leaves the clarifiers, and then we hit it with a dose of chlorine, and it goes through the filters. And I've got a photo here at the end that shows some of the leaves in the filters, but don't worry, it's okay. But we've got a project that in the not-too-distant future is basically to put a cover over those clarifiers so we don't get the leaves and maybe give somebody the wrong impression. After it goes through the filters, it goes into our $400,000 clear well, and that is covered. So once it's treated, it goes in that clear well, nothing's going to contaminate it. And then lastly, it flows into a wet well, which is below the high-service pump station. And then it pumps up to our 750,000-gallon elevated tank. And then that's when it gets out into the distribution system, and you'll hear more about that later.
Excuse me, how long does it take from the intake to the clear well? What's the time?
And that's why I brought these guys here tonight.
Oh, okay.
Cliff, how long?
From the actual intake to the plant, maybe an hour and a half. The pipe's never emptied, so when you turn it on, we installed a, basically a shut-off valve in the ozone room. So then we shut the line off at night so the pipe stays full. So when you start up the next morning, within a couple minutes, you're bringing flow in. You're not, so even though it might take an hour and a half of that water to get to you, you've got flow going, you know, within minutes.
It just seems like where that clarifier is, that it would take some time for that to settle. But that's really a pretty quick process.
Right, now, going through the whole process from, you know, basin to basin, it's about six hours for it to actually go through the clarifiers. You know, for it to actually go, you know, once it turns in and it gets hit with the chemicals, it goes into one clarifier, it takes about six hours to go through both clarifiers. So that gives it time for it to build its flock and set.
Okay, so from the time it actually comes in from the lake, the raw water, so to speak, to the time it makes it through all of those pictures, and it gets clear to the end?
You could be talking 12 hours. I mean, it depends on how much flow we have going, you know, how much water they're using for the day because we can adjust our flow up and down. So same way with, it takes about six hours just to flush the 500,000 gallons through the clear wells and the wet well. So once you've treated it, it takes about six hours for that actually leaves the plant.
Thank you.
So you have maybe six hours beginning, six hours.
Yeah, so you have a fair amount of planning to do as to your intake, how much you want?
Right, we adjust our pump speeds on how much flow we need for the day. So how much they're pulling out, how much we need to bring in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Jeremy, if we could go to slide number six where it says strengths at the top, thank you. The guys keep current on all the equipment maintenance, whether it's, you know, backwashing the filters or greasing equipment, changing oil, servicing all the motors and the pumps. They also, in addition to keeping the treatment plant maintained, they also maintain the grounds. They're mowing, they're weed eating as necessary to keep it looking presentable. Next. Our weaknesses are the fact that, even though this is really not a weakness on their part, but they are a small crew, they operate seven days a week with two shifts each day. And this leaves little manpower to help out with other departments doing other tasks. Like, I didn't ask the guys working at the treatment plants, whether water or wastewater, to help with the brush drop-off because they are a small crew. And each member averages about 50% of their time working by themselves. And if you think about that, you know, everybody's got a phone, of course, but, you know, you're in a hazardous condition, and that's not really the best place to be. If, you know, you would get a whiff of chlorine acid that completely knocked you out, you know, you would be better if we had additional staff. And that's coming later in the budget here, later in the budget request. In addition, a weakness that the guys feel is that there's a lot of new complicated equipment. So in 2018, the water treatment plant got an upgrade with SCADA in-ozone equipment. And this new equipment requires technical knowledge to be ran, as the equipment and controls are more complicated to run in the manual mode. Equipment repairs are more technical and expensive, and we basically have to hire our private company to complete the repairs. We just went through this for the ozone, and Cliff sent me the invoice, and I noticed it was more than $5,000. And I said, "Well, hey, you know, we gotta go get three quotes to be in our purchasing policy," right? He says, "Yeah, but there's one company in this country that does this type of work." So the company that we bought the equipment from, they're the only, they're sole source. So we're kind of, we're kind of at their needs, at their desire, when they want to. They haven't been out here in two years. And finally, we just said, "Hey, you guys got to get out here and maintain our equipment." And we're trying to work through a contract to where we can get them to come out at least once a year to make sure our ozone equipment is well-maintained. Do that preventive maintenance on our equipment. Same thing with the SCADA. SCADA costs, the annual programming needs that we have with Pedrati is, you know, $12,000. So, you know, it is costly, but obviously, well, good and well-tasting water is worth it. Next, please. Our opportunities are the fact that, as Cliff has mentioned, that we provide nearly a million gallons a day of clean and safe water. Our most recent peak was just last summer, and that was one and a half million gallons that the residents and businesses needed. And we have the capacity to treat 2.4 million gallons a day. So if you think about it, we're 10,000 people. Okay, we could go to 20,000 people, and we would still be good with the treatment plant that we have. We wouldn't really need any upgrades. So that's a good thing. So if Chris was still here, he could come to you and ask for another. 3,600 single-family homes without us having to do treatment plant improvements. These fellows do a great opportunity for the city of Harrisonville, businesses and residents, to grow and expand with minimum worry about their water. And they require to perform a number of laboratory tests to stay compliant with the state of Missouri. And this requires 3,000 man-hours each year doing tests. Next, please. And as Alderman Milner said, a lot of people don't know what these guys do. And a lot of people don't know because everything's underground for the most part, out of sight, out of mind. But most people are unaware of what our facility does. So the next few slides are going to point out that the minimum testing requirements that the state of Missouri requires for us to do. And in any one time, if these tests get out of compliance, or, you know, DNR could fine us, or we're potentially putting, you know, unsafe, unreliable water to drink. And I know something that recently has happened is the total organic carbon, right? Is that what we're testing twice?
Right, that's what we're doing.
So the state lab gives us one reading, and Cliff didn't like that, so he went and hired, got a private lab. So we're trying to compare, and, you know, he's adding certain chemicals at certain stages to try to offset that. And I think we've mentioned, this treatment plant runs 365 days a year, and basically from 5:30 a.m. to 8 o'clock at night. Next, please. So some of the examples of the minimum testing, I mean, they do daily tests. They do hourly tests within the day. And some of these hourly tests are pH, turbidity, temperature. They check free chlorine, total chlorine, monochlorine, acetylene, hardness, magnesium, and fluoride. And again, they use ozone basically to help disinfect and get the taste and odor out of our water, so we've got great tasting water. Some of the monthly testings are the total organic carbon, or TOC. And Cliff liked to throw in a lot of these acronyms in his weekly report, and sometimes he'd stump me. And I'm looking through my books, and I eventually have to Google things because I don't know what they mean. I have to look them up. But, you know, total organic carbon is a measure of what the total organic carbon is in the lakes compared to the total organic carbon at the filter effluent at the treatment plant. So that was something I didn't know, so again, I can go home. Quarterly tests include bromate, fluoride, synthetic organic compounds. And the lagoon, the outfall was sampled for pH, soluble solids, total chlorine, and total phosphorus. And yearly tests include inorganic, next, please. Yearly tests include inorganic compounds, trihalomethanes, haloacidic acids, and volatile organic carbons. Next, please. Threats. We are always under a threat regarding equipment failure due to power outages, inclement weather, or non-compliant tests coming back. However, they strive to do their job well and overcome these adversities. The treatment plant does have backup generators, and they keep them fueled and maintained. And they also have a telephone dialer system that calls up staff when there's a problem at the plant. So if, for whatever reason, we got a high-service pump, got a high temp alarm, they get a call. If we got an extra-high level of ozone, they get a call. So they get called quite a bit. And one of the last threats is that as the state regulations change with tighter limitations, they will require more training to stay compliant and require more staff. However, they are currently compliant, and they have an excellent staff and their knowledge of the wastewater, of the water treatment plant. And they intend to stay that way, providing clean and safe drinking water. And next, please. And like I mentioned, these improvements done in 2018, if you haven't been to the water treatment plant and you would like to tour, I know we're still kind of doing the COVID thing, but, you know, Cliff would be more than happy to show you around. And just give him a call before you want to come out there. Just don't kind of show up at the door because Cliff works the early shift. So Cliff may not be there if you call him in the evening. Somebody will be there, but Cliff may not be there. And next, please. And staff would like to thank you for your time and consideration for the SWOT analysis on the city's water treatment plant. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just think it's real important, you know, that's why we've been doing these SWOT analysis with the board. There's a lot of information, a lot of things like these guys do that are so important. As I told them before the work session here, you know, when there's no news, that's good news for them. It's when there's something bad going on, all of a sudden, they become front and center. And so we appreciate the hard work that they do. But I wanted to make sure that the board, I know some of you that are new to the board even, it's kind of good information to be able to know because when this comes up in budget discussions, and Carl is constantly pounding on me for more staff, then we can be able to come to you all about some of the decision-making that we're making to bring it forward to you so that you have a good understanding of it. So I appreciate the guys being here tonight. I know that going to city council meetings aren't high on their priority, but we appreciate them doing that.
You know, in past years, when we have done our board retreat, we've taken a tour of city buildings and city facilities. And we weren't able to do that this year because of COVID. But what we have done as a board is we've scheduled now that we're going to do two retreats every year. We're going to do a spring and a fall retreat. Our fall retreat is scheduled for September. And hopefully, as COVID numbers are trending down, we'll be able to include a tour of city facilities during our September retreat. So we may all come out and tour the water treatment plant sometime in September, perhaps, so. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for the leadership that you bring to this team. And thank you, gentlemen, for the job that you do. We appreciate knowing you, and we appreciate what you do for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Second item on our agenda for the work session tonight is a presentation from Chief Myler about the emergency services. He's going to talk about how much it costs us to operate it and what we can do to maybe increase some revenues. So Chief Myler?
I don't knock this off here.
I don't knock this off here. It's already been broke once tonight.
Don't tell everybody. It's already been broken tonight.
Well, I'm afraid I'm gonna knock it off here, that's the problem. I'm used to moving around, not used to standing at a podium to talk, but, um, tonight, Brad had approached me, it's been two or three months ago, about, you know, getting a better explanation about Medicare, Medicaid works and stuff. So he may, he, he thought it'd be a good idea to eventually show you guys where we're making our money at, where we're not making our money at, give you a better explanation of what we do, and how much we do, and how much we bill, and how much we collect. So, all right. So some of the objectives we're gonna go over, again, is the better understanding of Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, and we're also gonna go over revenue loss due to write-offs. We're also gonna go over, I understand a little bit about collection practices now. When I first took this job back in 2017, full-time, I had no idea about how collection practice works. So I got a lot of education from Rose, who's been with us for 20 years, and she had, is constantly training on this stuff. I'm also gonna go over some statistics and get you guys a better understanding of where we make our calls at. And we're also gonna go over some possible additional revenue resources. So this, this chart you see here, if you've noticed that the blue line is basically, that's, that's billable calls. In other words, every call we go out on, we don't bill for every call. Now, when you're looking at the blue line there, you're basically, that's, you'll see that there's a considerable amount of money that's billed out. If you look at the orange line in that area, that means about how much is collected. So if you did a comparison-type thing, it's roughly around 50% of what we collect back. The other deal is the amount that's actually written off. So it's a considerable amount of difference in, in understanding on it. So the next one is, it shows the amount of Medicare or Medicaid write-offs annually. So the blue line, I have to apologize, I, when I went to print my paperwork, I didn't print everything. So, so I'm kinda like blindly there, so. So the blue line is basically Medicare, Medicaid, right, uh, just, uh, how much is billed per year to those two. And then the other part is where the actual amount that's actually sent to collections. So it's a considerable amount. Notice in 2019, it was down quite a bit. But I try to get you to understand that a lot of the rolling to- the totals that I present to you are basically rolling totals. There could be a call that we billed for in 2018 that we're still collecting money on over a time period. So I'm gonna kinda give you a, an understanding of how Medicare works. And Medicare, basically on this slide, it basically shows you that patient number one, who has Medicare and some type of supplemental insurance. Now, there are some people out there that have just straight Medicare, and you have some people that have a, a supplemented type insurance called like Adventure or Adana, and that kinda stuff. So if you look at the comparison here, this, like, I actually took this off an actual bill to save the names, and Rose really taught me a lot about all this. So, um, so we billed this patient $966.96. Now, a base rate, which is a BLS-1, which I'll get into it a little bit later in the slide presentation about knowing the difference, is basically a $680 base rate with, with 27.2 miles, this is what this call was, and that's a 10.55 a mile. So the amount we actually collected from that patient itself was only $272. And the reason being of that is, is that Medicare has a contractual fee. Medicare and Medicaid are the only two companies that we're actually contractual for, and they only pay a certain amount to the provider back. So basically, after everything is, after the contractual fees are written off, we actually, like I said, collected $276, that whole total $966 bill. So it's not a lot. And so in turn, if you have a Medicare or a supplemental insurance like that, you'll basically have to pay back, you'll have to be responsible for this amount. That's normally what the patients, and so if you have a, a patient, or per, uh, I'm sorry, a customer, I should say customer, that has a fixed income, and you, they pay what they can over time. Now, now, the department itself has like a $25 minimum type. You can make $25 a month, and we work with you to get through it. So this is a little bit of understanding of billing rates. And basically, what a BLS-1 is, is they, it's a normal rate for a large percentage of our calls. Basic, BLS basically means basic life support. And there would be a paramedic involved, but they're not doing anything other than just being a paramedic. In other words, they're taking vitals, they're maybe put them on a cardiac monitor, that kinda stuff that requires a paramedic, but there's no ALS, which is advanced life support care that's being done, other than maybe a little oxygen administration, stuff like that, but nothing really out there. Now, ALS-1, basically, anytime a paramedic operates within their scope of practice, and when I talk about scope of practice, that means that paramedics are taught to do a certain level of, of care. And so that, that incorporates like starting an IV, giving some medications, you would bill that as the ALS-1 call. Now, when billing, when I approached you about this, the reason why they don't do that a lot is because Medicare and Medicaid has such constraints on things that you have to make sure that you're, you're basically billing for what that patient's getting, in other words. And when you talk about ALS-2, it's a very difficult thing to do, to bill for, because you have to, the paramedic actually has to give three, three different types of drugs, and it does, oxygen's not one of them. So yet, it's a really high, it's a very low thing that we do, and we bill for. There was some, a situation about, uh, two years ago where there were several fire departments in the area that had paramedic services, and they billed a majority of, they had a outside billing, an outsourced billing that billed the wrong rate to Medicare, and they end up having to reimburse Medicare for a lot of money. So this is something we don't bill a lot of unless it's like a non-breather, somebody with a real bad cardiac problem would be where we're getting this large amount of drugs to people at one time. So Medicaid's a little bit more context, it's basically get what you get. Medicaid has really, uh, has a lot of contractual fee. When Brad had sent this back to me, it didn't make any sense to me, and it didn't make any sense to him, but this patient was basically billed a $711.65, which included a $68, $680 base rate for an ALS-1 service, and plus 31.65.
For three miles.
For three miles, I'm sorry. So Medicaid only paid, showed that they paid us $437.55, but they really only actually paid us $274.10, which made basically the same amount to almost be written off, is what they say they paid us. So, um, and the, and Medicaid and Medicare both, when they, uh, when we submit payment to them, it differs every time. I mean, it's never like, every time for this specific patient, you're gonna get, you're gonna get this much money back every time. So it, it differs quite a bit. Built private insurances, they kinda do whatever they want in that situation. This patient was billed $966.96 for a base rate of $680, $680 for an ALS-1 service, and the mileage is 27.2 miles, got, took the first patient. And so a lot of the amounts collected varies on the individual's insurance and their coverage. And, um, but the majority haven't paid like 50% of the invoice billed back. A lot of the, uh, this basically means the patient's responsible for it, but I found out through my own personal, through our city insurance, that if you have a co-pay on your ambulance, which most do, if you meet your deductible, they will pay that, you can press the insurance company to pay the bill in hold, which they did. So, um, so this is something we have to constantly remind, uh, our patients and our customers that you can press your insurance company to pay these bills off. So this is, we're out of the billing, the billing aspect now. Now I'm gonna kinda give you an idea of on the call statistics. The line in blue is basically calls for services, and basically what that is, that is fire calls, no-service calls, you know, public assist calls, lift assist. So the one in the orange is basically EMS calls themselves. And then the gray line is your billable calls again, and then you have your transfers, which are kinda pretty good sizable number of our calls, and, and probably half of our billable calls, maybe more. So this is basically a, kind of a, a slide that I just threw in there, and it just shows you on the transfers that we take out of the hospital, how many of those patients actually really are residents of the city and non-residents. And the non-resident aspect of it is, is that we transport a lot of non-residents out of the hospital compared to the residents. And if you look at the mileage, that's total mileage for the year. So if you take that number, take it times three, I'm putting 20,000 miles on my ambulance as a year, taking patients out of the hospital. So, it's a, it's a pretty good, and if you notice, every year, it considerably goes up. So just something to look at, everyone. So this is kinda Ben's slide.
Ben has a slide.
He's got, he's got a couple.
I'll almost let him explain this one. So we talked less budget, last year on the budget process, about, a little about, about how the emergency services set up. It's set up in its own fund, if you will, and then general fund is off to the side. General fund subsidizes, and has subsidized, the emergency services fund since its inception. What we've done here is just show a five-year forecast and that out from the current budget process, the 2021 budget, 2022 coming up, into 2024. And all this does is assume nothing changes, 1%, we, Brad can hold expenses down, Chief can hold expenses down to 1% growth every year, which is unheard of, especially when he's, probably saying ambulance is annually, 1% growth in, every year, and then the sales tax growing, say, 2% to 3%. The green bar at top is the general fund reserves, fund balance, if you will, and the red bar is what the ambulance, so the emergency services cash reserves are right now. You'll notice that there's a, the red is a, is a negative, and that's the reason I use red, but it's a negative balance and going even deeper down into 2024 if it's unchecked. Now typically, every year when the auditors come, they push those two funds together. So the general fund is absorbing everything in the emergency services fund, but for our purposes, we show the public those two funds for transparency. So from the audit perspective, they're assuming that the general fund's gonna take care of emergency services. So I make that assumption here. And that's really, this slide really is do nothing if nothing's done and we just continue to move like we do now. So talking a little bit about the, and this is the chief's side, I think, but I, but I'll go through it. Yeah. So we've got basically two basic revenue choices, if you will, to, to help shore up that fund and, and wean off, off of the general fund subsidy. And you can see each one of these levels of, of property tax, and that's what this is, it's just property tax, both personal and real property tax. It gives you the, the percent value increase. And you can see all the way up to the 50, well, 50 cent per assessed value is around $735,000. Right now, the sales tax piece coming into the, that fund for public safety sales taxes is just over a half a million dollars. So at this point, just, I'll stick to that 50 cents. Go ahead to the next slide.
This is just a slide that we did for some ideas of some extra revenue involved. Right now, we pay roughly about $178,000, some change, onto the hospital annually for their contract for transport services out of their hospital. This, this was not really negotiated very well in 2018. When we did it before, it was basically, we basically just negotiated with the contract, changed a few things in there, and continued on. If you notice in the graph before, it showed a drastic increase in calls and transfers out of the hospital since 2017. I mean, when this was initially negotiated back in 2013, 2014, uh, we ran probably about 750 to 800 transfers out of that hospital, out of the hospital a year. So now we're up, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna suppress the, surpass another thousand transfers out of that this year. And we give away a small majority of those to our private service, but for the majority, we take all these calls. So it's quite a, it's quite a revenue resource, but you're only collecting about 50% of it back. So, I mean, the thing I, the thing I looked at is if I, on that previous slide where I showed you about the amount and the mileage they put on my vehi- on the ambulance as a year, it would only make it, make it where they're responsible, at least try to replace an ambulance annually, and maybe possibly staff it. Now, the, the statistical numbers for, that's just one crew, that would staff that and run that 24 hours a day. So, um, so that would bring in some extra revenue, in a sense. Now, whether we negotiate that this time or not, that's yet to be known.
So I was wrong, there's three different sources of revenue. But what this slide shows is the impact if it was a half-cent increase. So that'd be three quarters of a penny, a public safety sales tax. Now, within that fund, I think, go to the next slide if you would. Yeah, I'm wrong. This is the half-cent, the other one was just a quarter-cent increase. So right now, there's a quarter-cent sales tax in that fund, public safety sales tax. The previous slide just shows another quarter cent. This one actually shows an increase of a half cent. So this one, this one actually would take it all the way up, and you can see that red line jumping up above the, the zero. What this would do is stabilize that fund to where it could end up weaning itself off of the general fund by 2023, it looks like. There is a one-time transfer in here in 2023 to be able to cover the negative deficit, the, the cash deficit that's sitting in that fund right now from the general fund, and that's baked into the green line. So the green line is still high, even though that payment would, or that transfer would need to take place. So this one has the half-cent increase, so that total, the total, uh, sales tax being collected is three quarters of a cent within this fund, under this scenario. I think that was it.
I think the next one is Steve.
So the next two things that you have are simple memos. If you go to the, for the, the next one, Jeremy, what we did in this memo of April 30th was to look at the available statutes that would allow for an increase such that if you wanted to put on another half cent or more, and what available would you have? And there are different statutes that the city could use. You have room in your general sales tax, you have, you have room in the public safety, you have room actually in the fire protection district, which statute 321, 242 was amended to include not only fire protection districts, but also cities that have their own municipal fire service. So the existing, there, there is a possibility that you could go all the way up to, you know, three quarters of 1% by cobbling together some of the different taxes. I don't think anybody's suggesting that you do that, but that just tells you that there are various resources that you could use. resources that you could use. And then if you go back to Jeremy, one, one memo, then you look at that and it's simply under the various statutes, the ballot language is pretty much prescribed in the statute. You don't have a lot of play in exactly what wording you want to use, but if you want to go to the sales tax avenue, we can pick any one of those to utilize for finding additional funding for the EMS service.
So one of the goals that you all asked from staff is to come from different revenue sources to address the EMS issue. Clearly, just negotiating the, the hospital contract's not going to get us there. A tax levy would be too big of a lift, I think, with the residents. And then Eric showed you how many that were servicing outside the city limits, which is a considerable number of people that are being serviced by Harrisonville, that are outside of Harrisonville. And so Harrisonville, if you recall from the, the presentation I gave you all, that was from Mid-American Regional Council, we have the lowest sales tax in the metropolitan area, and so we're very competitive in that area. You know, taxes are never popular and no one ever likes them, including staff. I've never been, I've never worked for a board of aldermen or a city council or county commissioners that said to me, how can we raise taxes? They usually say, how can we cut it and do more? And so we have looked at every avenue. As you've seen from the graphs before, this has been a trend that's been going on in Harrisonville for years, and it's just getting worse and worse as it goes along. Ben pushed that out with me another five years, your general fund will be out of reserves in a ten-year period, if you continue on the conjecture that you're doing. And so we have to make decisions. I think fire and EMS is very important to our citizenry, but how do we, how do we put something on the ballot where, that we can explain it? And also that it's not just our residents that are paying for it, that it's people outside of our community that are utilizing our services, that they contribute toward that. And the only, the best option for that is sales tax, because those people that are coming to the hospital, coming into the town have, are here for a purpose. Most of the time, if they're here for a purpose, they're, they're doing something and spending their monies here. And then if we're having to do any type of emergency service with them, or we're having to transport them back to maybe their home county or their home city, this would be an opportunity that the sales tax, if you do the, our, our recommendation is the fire tax that Steve outlined as, is available for cities on the fire protection. If we did the hot, the half cent, it would generate close to about seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand a year, just for that half cent. That would, as you've seen from that graph earlier, would bring the EMS, once we inject the additional eight hundred thousand that we have already and inject that and get them on a level playing field, then they will begin to pay for themselves. Also, if you know by the different retailers that are coming into the area, it also expands that base, and it's not the residents of Harrisonville that are having to shoulder and bear the full burden of EMS services in the city of Harrisonville. And so to do that, in discussions with the mayor about it, is they, to get on the August ballot, the May twenty-fifth is the deadline for us to get on the August ballot to the voters. Staff recommends that if we go to the voters, that we do that in August, because then it gives you the knowledge on the budget for next year, and if you can see that those funds would be coming in after the first of the year, to be able to balance the budget. And so if we do that and you all agree that that's the route you want to go tonight, then I can bring the ordinance at the next meeting for you to approve, to then put it on the ballot for August. And then always remember this, me and staff, we can only tell the residents facts. We can't tell people to vote for it. You can tell people to vote for it because you're elected, but we can't use staff or city resources to promote people to vote for something. What's usually best is if a, one of our citizen groups gets involved and they, you know, get out a lot of literature to people explaining it. But we, we can put out literature at least to explain why we're asking and, and the purpose of it. So we kind of need a direction from you all tonight on if you want us to bring it to the next meeting. If this is the route you want us to go, you seem to get where we would want to go on the tax, a property tax is like fifty cents, and I think people would lose their minds if we brought that to them. So we tried to find the, the best route to get there, and we felt that they have, half of.
Calls that are outside of the city. Isn't that the responsibility of the county EMS or?
That was the same question I was going to bring up, is, is there a way that the county, that we can get funds from the county to cover those costs? Because we are serving them.
That's a whole turf war.
Because it kind of seems like we're going to pass a tax that the citizens are subsidizing us for outside.
So the slide I showed you is the actual patients that are actually transferred from the hospital. So I, I don't have a definite number. I mean, there's, there's, there's people we take out of the hospital out here that don't even live in the state. I mean, hospitals on the highway, somebody gets sick, they stop there. They have, they, they don't have the service available to them to take care of them, so they transfer them to another hospital.
Eric, what was that issue earlier this year that we've never dealt with before? They stopped at the Justice Center, and it was a COVID patient that died.
Yeah, it was a patient that a private service was transporting from Lee Summit, I would guess, taking him back to.
There's Henry County.
Well, it was John Knox Village, who was the ambulance service, but they were taking a COVID-positive patient back for hospice and somewhere down around Springfield, I think it was Sarcoxy or Seneca or something like that, and he died en route. And so they were going to bring him back to the hospital, where the hospital says, don't bring him here because he's already deceased. And so they had to stop at the commuter lot on Rock Haven. Police had to stop them because they were going to the hospital, and they said, you can't do that. So they had to do that, and they had, the medical examiner arrived and it was a big mess.
But it was our guys in EMS that were dealing with it, and I mean, they weren't technically a county resident.
We're getting the bills for it and having to pay for it.
Oh yeah, I mean, we're paying for it because we're tying our staff up with it. And every, in Cass County, there's the fire districts, you know, Central Cass is around us, and it's just a whole different turf that's involved with these fire districts and cities that are offering these services. And so the county, the county only funds the hospital with their, what is it, a half a, half a mill, something with a mill, and, and that's the hospitals pushback on us when we contract negotiate with them. I've, I've already, I've already started this, and so it's already, it's already game, game on. And is, well, you're double taxing people by asking us to pay more because we're, 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 we're county-funded and the county residents are already paying for it. And then the city of Harrisonville is, is residents are paying for it, so you're double taxing them. Well, my argument is, no, we're really not, because you guys aren't paying, but you're actually bringing in for these type of services. But that's, that's the turf war that we get involved with.
I have a question. Do, do we, do we charge city residents the same amount that we charge out of city residents for the same services?
Yes.
And along with that question, then, because I think it doesn't matter what we charge from what I get, no wonder this fund does not support itself. No wonder, I mean, you don't even get half of your money out of what you're charging for. So it's, you're losing off of the top, no matter what. So with that, I mean, if you charge more, is Medicaid going to pay more, or is it just, that's all we're paying?
Feds only will say what they will pay, and that's it, and you won't get any more out of them.
So why are we charging for more then, if we know we're not even going to get that?
Well, that's, we have not updated our rate in ten years, because all it's going to do is make our number look bigger on the write-off.
Yeah. And so then you go to the write-off, because that's the other thing. Do you get the tax break or something? Is, is there a tax break on the, what you write off?
We don't pay taxes, but do you want me to answer that question?
Or some sort of, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The rates are different. We, we, we charge, in simplest form, we charge a higher rate than what the Fed will pay Medicare, because some insurance companies or private payers will pay the higher rate. So, but you have to charge the higher rate in order to get it, even though Medicare will only pay a certain fixed cost. If you charge a higher rate, you might get it collected by a private payer. That was one of the examples you saw, that an insurance company would pay more.
They're going to pay at least half of it anyways, right?
The reason why you do that is so that you might get it collected from a different source, but you have to charge the same to everybody.
That's correct. That's a good point. You, you have to have the same rate. You can't charge a different rate, whether it's a private insurance or Medicare, Medicaid, so. Wait, just a second. I want to go to Alderman Turner. He's been waiting patiently.
I would say, with, the county doesn't have that many ambulance services. You've got Harrisville, Central Cass, Garden City, but we also have mutualized agreements, but everybody charges the same rate. We, we bill the person. And the thing is, um, our Medicare, and so it's, their, their pay's fixed. I mean, and so we're, you know, and if Central Cass is busy, they might call us to run some of their calls. So our ambulance goes there, it's part of the mutual agreement. When our ambulance is busy, they come into our town and run calls for us, or transfers, whatnot, and they bill that person also. I mean, we don't get the money from them doing it, they get it, and vice versa. So, I mean, we are billing the people that we are transporting, you know, that out of towners, plus Harrisville, but our rates and we're really handcuffed with Medicare, because they don't pay so much. And like, like they said before, I mean, no matter if they're on Medicare or insurance, you, you can't just charge variable rates. You have to have one rate across the board. You know, that's the only way. But then also the hospital, I mean, I said, the negotiation before, we've been, with the contract, if their call volume exceeds a certain amount, we're supposed to charge more. We never did. And so we've lost and lost and lost money. So now we're trying to get, we need to get that straightened out and get back ahead and, and help, help us get on the whole with it.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Alderman Reese, you're next.
Well, back to what I was talking about, of the, do we charge more or less for residents and non-residents? And I think you started to say that we, we charge the same amount. Is that, that the case?
We have to. We can't charge different.
Okay. What about for fire services? I mean, is, is it, is it just for the ambulance that there are those laws that we can't charge a different amount?
I mean, fire, fire services is, is kind of married to the, the ambulance service, because as you know, when ambulance goes out, the fire trucks go out with them. They, so that's kind of part of the cost that's associated with that. And, you know, when we, when we did the annexation, the voluntary annexation, Central Cass sent me a letter and said, we would, you know, they weren't really happy with our plan, but they, they essentially said, we would also be willing in the future, if you want to negotiate, where we would take over fire service. But they never said ambulance, because none of them want the ambulance service, because everybody knows that the ambulance service is costly, where the fire service is, is not as costly, because of the, the laws that are in the regulations that are involved with that. But, you know, because we even had that discussion among staff is, you know, do we come to y'all and say, hey, should we just, you know, not be in the, in the business of doing that? But the reality is, nobody's going to want the EMS services, because it is a, it is a costly venture, but it's a very needed venture by our residents and people that come to our community. And so it's a, it's a very difficult balancing act. It is right, you know, there, there has been, at, what was it, two thousand and fourteen was the value, fair market value evaluation that was done with the hospital. We just met with them today, the company that did it in two thousand and fourteen. And so that's getting updated now over these next three weeks, and Eric's providing them all of the data on the fair market value. And he's hoping being on the, on the front end of it, he's never agreed with their evaluation, and, and he wants to make sure they're using all the data on that fair market value. Hospital won't even start negotiations with us until that's done. And so we're trying to get that completed and updated, so that we can be able to have a, a good discussion with them. And so that's why, if I'm answering your question, where, why we're kind of in that rock and hard spot.
I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around providing a service that we don't get paid for. That just sounds really, I, I guess, but all cities face that same problem?
Any provider, any provider of services that are healthcare-related faces that. You know, hospitals and physicians all day long are writing off money that Medicare or Medicaid will not pay, and the amounts that Medicare and Medicaid allows are reduced every single year. So you're never going to get more than what you're getting, and, and everybody who's in healthcare is facing that. Alderman Dorhoff.
I'm trying to remember, Brett, in a retreat, didn't we talk about doing a hotel tax to help do this? So it wasn't affecting the residents so much as people that come from outside of Harrisonville?
That's true. We, we have been in conversation about having a hotel guest tax. However, that has to be utilized only for tourism-related services. It cannot be reused for anything like this. But, and you're right, the advantage of that is that it's affecting people who are passing through the city, but unfortunately.
I just imagine we're going to have a pretty hard time with the residents, that they're going to, their taxes are going to be increased for, for a large number of outside of Harrisonville, you know, transport calls and that kind of stuff.
You know, the general public is, is usually supportive of public safety taxes, because they, they know they need police services and they need fire ambulance services. Nobody likes taxes, but I think the things that we have to remember here are, number one, the population of Medicare, Medicaid recipients who utilize our services is always going to be there, and it's going to be increasing, you know, as time goes on. The reimbursement coming from Medicare, Medicaid is always going to be reduced. That's, we never get away from that. Fire and EMS services never make money for a municipality. They never do. It's a service that you have to provide to the general public. What you try to do is get that service to, as much as it can, cover its own cost, so that it doesn't impact the municipality like it's done Harrisonville, where we've had to subsidize the fire EMS to the tune of eight and nine hundred thousand dollars, which takes eight or nine hundred thousand dollars away from other things that we could be using that for, whether it's infrastructure or streets or, you know, whatever it happens to be. So, you know, it's, it's, it's not easy, and as you said, if you're having citizens pay for it when sometimes it's outside residents utilizing the service, is that fair? No, it's probably not fair, but the other option is to no longer provide the service. And people want you to provide that service. So Alderman Milner.
Okay, I've got a couple of things, and, and, and I'm only asking because I don't know the answers. We've also talked about a gas tax at some point. Can that at all be used to subsidize? It's very specific, like the hotel tax.
Yeah, gas tax can only be used for transportation-related.
And is, and is there not a possibility that we would just simply, at some point, tell the hospital, we're not transporting, we're only transporting from our accidents and our calls within our community? We're not transporting on to other places and they would have to hire a private service? Is that not, I mean, and I'm just, again, I'm just asking.
I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, but the one thing I want you to understand is that I collect, I bill probably about one point three million out of that hospital a year. Even if I only collect fifty percent of that back, what's that, seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand? So that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars I'm going to lose out of revenue. So that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars I'm gonna lose out of revenue, if that happens.
And I'm just thinking out loud, I mean, the so the other thing is, and in Judy's thought, it's not that those people that don't live here aren't paying anything, because their insurance is probably also getting billed, and they still have to be able, I mean, we still bill them whether they live here or not.
Yes.
So it's not like, it's not like you and I are paying for everybody going that doesn't live here.
Correct.
It's not like we're paying for them, because they're still gonna get billed one way or the other.
And the way we're doing it right now is putting more of a burden on the residents, because it's not paying for it, so essentially the residents of Harrisonville are supplanting the loss of revenue for that service for people that are outside of the community.
I think, and my last thought here, I I think, like you said, I I I think citizens are very supportive of that type of a tax, I I don't think they have as much of a problem with that, they're always gonna have a problem with a tax, but I also think as a, as us staff and board, if we do our due diligence to put the numbers out there to them and say, this is how much it costs us, this is how much Medicare pays, this is how much we always gets, and this is what we write off a year. So basically, we're having to recoup this amount from you to begin with. So I I think it would be in our advertising and our push, but I also think it's got to say exactly and specifically for what we're going to spend this money on. And that will also, that was my other question, that money will only go into a specific fund and account, and cannot be used for anything other than this, it's only for emergency services. That will be a big push for community members as well to know that
Yeah.
this money is only going here, and that's all it ever gonna be used for.
We already have a half cent emergency.
Could I add something to this?
Yeah.
It's it's
Okay, so let me give you a little history of how the the original public safety sales tax that we have in place currently. This was, that was brought on when the fire department merged with EMS. EMS was a twenty-four hour business, fire was an only an eight to five business. And so when it was approached to uh the voters about the original public safety sales tax, they basically voted that in to staff that fire department twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So they never took that in concession, or I don't even know if that's the right word for it, that growth. And you look at the at the numbers of our staff members, we have probably probably about a quarter to almost three eighths percent of our staff is has over ten years' experience on the department. So when it when when that was originally brought in, they didn't take any advantage, you know, any anything about growth and maturity of the department, and every year, your salaries are gonna go up, because people get raises, and your insurance is gonna go up, and your work comp's gonna go up, that's gonna go up every year, they didn't take that in. And now we're looking at, what, twelve years later, and now we've exceeded our means.
Sure.
And it's
And I and I think that's important information as well.
Right, I mean, that's what that's what we're gonna have to understand to the voters, when they put, when you guys are able to put it out there, is that every year it's getting worse, this is just only gonna supplement, so we're not getting worse every year.
Yeah, I I mean, I think, I I don't think, I don't think we personally have a choice but to try this.
Yeah.
But again, I think it's how we push it out is going to be the deciding factor.
Alderman Zerring.
And that's what I was gonna agree with you on, I think you hit it right on the head there, it's the messaging of where this money's, not only where it's going, but where it's coming from, because as we sat here and talked, again, it's a sales tax, so that's not just the citizens of Harrisonville bearing that burden, it's all those people stopping at Love's to buy gas.
Well, I mean, it's Brad said at last board meeting that that he had those people that live in Belton and Raymore that are afraid to go to the Walmart, and they come down here to shop.
Yeah.
I hear the same thing about Lee Summit.
They all hate Walmart in Raymore, they all come to Harrisonville.
I mean, when you go to Lee Summit, you're paying a sale, you're paying a sales tax up there for fire as well too, and it's a lot higher than what ours is.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it would be like with Bill, if Bill could track.
Uh possibly have a little bit more room in the public safety, if you look at that line there, we have a fourth of of one percent, and we can go as high as two percent. But I also want to caution you that, you know, when we when we were talking about sales tax, that we'd be, and I know, I can tell you from experience and from the data, uh Belton and Raymore are between ten and around ten percent to eleven percent, and some of their areas because of CIDs, because we also have to keep those in mind, if we do a CID, we don't want to get into a place where we're the highest. Um, right now, we're the lowest, and so we want to stay competitive in that manner. Um, but there is, I mean, we could, we could go higher in the public safety component of it. Our concern was, for you as a board, what is easier to sell? We say public safety, and they see the language, public safety, and you say it's for fire and EMS. Um, no, no, there's the component of the police department. And the effects of that, that's a part of it. And then them saying, oh, you're just gonna give more money to the police department instead of the fire department.
Right.
And so that's, that's up to you all, and you you all know the residents better than us the staff, but to us, if it's just plain language of fire, uh protection, it seems a lot easier to explain. And, you know, and as Alderman Milner was just pointing out, we can even put up there, I mean, because some people will say, well, just keep using the general fund, you know, just keep using the general fund. Well, okay, well, then the general fund's gonna be without any reserves, and here's everything on the general fund that's gonna be affected, which is the police department, uh which is the street department and the roads and stormwater, and all those things that are being funded out of the general fund. And so, um, that's the other part of the argument, when people say, well, just keep, you know, dipping into the general fund. Because the general fund is is taking huge hits over these last few years, because it's not just been the the EMS proportion of it, but we had the parks. Well, parks is getting getting off the general fund by twenty twenty-three, that's gonna help. Um, then with EMS and and Ben, when he showed those numbers, that's that's even taken consideration with the parks getting off, you're still gonna have a downward trend with EMS.
Steve, how, do we write our own language, our own ballot language?
Nope, the by statute, the statutes that authorize these tax very clearly say, this is what you must say. So the the language in that second memo of shall the city of Harrisonville impose a sales tax of, and then you set the rate for the purpose of providing revenues for the operation of Harrisonville Emergent Services, that's straight out of the statute.
Perfect.
And you have to follow that, so.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So with with that, because I'm I'm with you, what you were just saying, as we were going through all of this, at one point I was thinking, well, why are we even doing a tax at all? Because we're paying for it no matter what. But it all goes back to, it's not, a tax isn't the citizens paying for it out of the fund, it's just the citizens paying for that.
Exactly.
That's the citizens' money, to where a sales tax would capture a lot of the
Outside the city.
And again, it goes back to the messaging of that, we can't do it messaging in the ballot, but to get the message out there, however, we can, to explain it to that detail, I think is important.
The other thing that would be very helpful is if all of us, as well as staff, get the specifics. Here's how much we have to use out of the general fund every year, I mean, give us
The talking points.
Give us the talking points, and everything that we're gonna put in the media and on social media, give us all those talking points to where, when we have that phone call, or we run into someone, we have the very specifics. Did you know that in your general fund, this is how much we have to take out every year just to cover the expenses?
Yeah, that you that you pay for, yeah, that you pay for.
And that doesn't include cost of living. Yeah, that you pay for anyway, yeah, I think that's very, very important.
For people that are passing through.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think another thing that's gonna be important is, it's not a property tax, it's a sales tax. So it's not taxing the Harrisonville residents, it's taxing everybody who's utilizing and purchasing in Harrisonville. And a lot of those are people who don't live here, so that's, and you're right, you're both, you're all right, the messaging has to be on spot, and we have to all be in agreement that this is the best thing for our city, because as Brad explained, the city can put out factual information, but it's the board
Right.
that can say, this is a good thing, and we need you to support this, Alderman.
I know we talked about it, the retreat, do we have a roadmap for how we want to start instituting some of these? I know we talked about at one set, sales, you know, gas tax and some of these other things, so staggering them a little bit, so we're not hitting them all at one time, do we have a kind of a roadmap of how we want to do this over the next year or two years?
So where we're at right now, you mentioned the hotel guest tax earlier. We have been in communication with State Representative Chris Sander, who has actually carried that bill for us to the Missouri House and has gotten it passed. So the Missouri House has now approved, there were five other cities in addition to Harrisonville that wanted to put a guest hotel tax on the ballot. Um, and so right now, that legislation has made its way through the Missouri House and is now in the Missouri Senate. So if the Senate takes that up and passes it, and it goes to the governor for his signature, what that does is it gives us the ability to ask voters if they would approve that tax. It doesn't give us the ability to implement the tax, it gives us the ability to allow voters to vote for that tax if they so choose. Then that revenue has to be utilized for tourism or convention-type business.
Right, what's what's the status on the, remember you talking about that the the House was trying to pass getting rid of cities allowing, you know, allowing cities to pass some of those taxes?
So the the main thing there was, there was movement um in the House to restrict the municipal uh government's use of CIDs and TDDs. Um, that legislation I don't think is gonna go anywhere in this session, but there is a real move in Jefferson City to take local control away from us. And, um, you know, for example, I saw one piece of legislation that is that is actually probably going to happen. Um, you know, we've been talking about the um money that's coming from the feds, that the cities and the counties and everybody that are gonna be receiving, that the feds are gonna be tracking how we're spending that money. One other state legislature thinks that they should track it also. So it's just that kind of stuff that that's going on in Jefferson City right now, and it's 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 really harmful to local government.
And they also want to change our local elections, yes.
Yes, they do, yes, they do. So, um, but anyway, that's that's kind of the update on the hotel guest tax. Um, you know, we've also had conversation for the last several years about implementing a gas tax, simply because that provides revenue from the traveling public, and enables us to have a source of revenue for improving infrastructure. Um, that is probably something that we should take up and talk about at at some point also. But I think the critical thing before us right now is, as Chief Myler has said, you know, we've got to do something about EMS. It's never gonna get any better, it's just gonna keep sucking and sucking and sucking, you know, on revenues for the city, which takes away money from our ability to utilize it elsewhere, so, Mr. Ratliff.
And that was one with your roadmap, so the 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 most pressing issue for the city is the fire EMS is definitely, I mean, eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in the general fund, and that is a pressing issue. It takes a simple majority to pass that tax, that sales tax. The one penny fuel fee takes sixty-seven point seven percent to say yes, it's super majority to pass. So staff felt the more pressing need was the fire EMS issue that we need to get addressed. And then for maybe next year, not this year, but maybe next year, had the discussion with the board about when to look at the one penny issue. Um, because we, it's a lot heavier lift, and like I said, there's a reason why there's only two cities in the whole state that have it, because it's hard to get sixty-seven point seven percent to say yes.
To agree on anything.
Yeah, right.
So this has been really good discussion, um Alderman Mills, I haven't heard too much from you on this. Do you have any comments or questions or thoughts? On the fire EMS?
We had the same discussion thirty years ago, um, numbers weren't quite as big.
Yeah.
But we've, out of the general fund, been budgeted and paid up the difference ever since I've been up here. Um, yeah, and and the one cent sales tax just keeps getting eroded. Um, so, and I'm for sales taxes over property taxes. Uh, and and that's just a big selling point, and, um, you know, I I don't know what the recent numbers are, but, you know, the outsiders pay for everything. Um, the sales tax that we take in, you know, if you divide it by the four thousand resident apartments or homes that are here, families, um, I don't believe they each spend twenty thousand dollars a year here in Harrisonville. Um, so it's it's, we're funded by the by the outsiders, so that's the thing to do. And, um, and, yeah, and I would agree that the, the, my computer just died, so whatever I was looking at there. Um, the uh fire wording is the is my direction to go in versus adding to the increasing the one cent sales tax, but, uh, no, it's a, it's been a contention for for years and years, and
Yeah.
and get out of the business, who can we sell it to, all all of those discussions every every few years, but we write the check, we've written the check for years and years, so, um.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other, Alderman Franklin, you've been quiet.
No, I I agree, I agree, I think we need to get it on the August ballot. And I think that the wordage, I think, um, get something in the paper, make sure that it is exactly exactly how it needs to be said and stated. And I think we need to get it on there as soon as possible. And, you know, what you said offered too, was to have all of us, so that we're all on the same page, and that we all are in agreement, and we have the information right there, so if we are contacted, phoned, emailed, I think is extremely important.
I think one of the key pieces too is to find out, give us the numbers of how much we have to take out of the general fund every year to cover the losses, I think that's a huge piece.
Put up a newspaper, website.
And and explain the other end of that, that that half cent is going to write us.
Yeah.
And you won't at that point have to.
And also sell the point that that half cent is just not coming from the residents.
Yeah.
And it is coming from anyone who spends money here.
Right, right, exactly. Does anybody else have any comments? I'm kind of getting the sense is that the board agrees that we need to move forward on this. So do you want to go ahead and give staff the okay to bring this back to us at our next meeting? To be able, the ballot language on our next meeting in ordinance, so that we can put this on the August ballot? Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Alderman Reese, I don't see your head going, okay. Uh Turner, I didn't see your head, okay, okay. All right, there you go.
So we'll have Steve work on the language first and get that, and then Daniel and I and the rest of, Daniel will be key on the messaging. And, um, and we can, as Ben was shaking his head, we can provide you the, probably it'd be better to give you the number with, you know, probably a a bar graph, because people sometimes won't look at the numbers as best they look at pictures.
Yeah, I think it's right, reading bar graph is great, one's gonna be in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right, yes, right. We can get Daniel to write the piece for the paper.
Yes, yes, Daniel will, Daniel will do the interview with
All right, are there any other comments about the fire EMS? Okay, I want to move on to the COVID nineteen discussion. You know, one of the things that we learned, good night, Ben, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ben.
One of the things that we learned as a city during COVID was the need to be able to pivot. You know, there's a lot of discussion about, well, if you have the vaccination, are you protected? And do you not have to wear a mask and so forth and so on? Um, when I talked with Andrew Warland, the Health Department Director, about the value of the vaccine, he said, you know, the only way that people can really be insured that they're protected is if you know that both parties have had the vaccine. If you know that the person that you're interacting with has had the vaccine, and you've had the vaccine, you're relatively safe. So, um, I just wanted to, as I said, I wanted to have conversation with you both, first of all, about the mask thing. Do you think it's okay? Um, I I looked at the numbers from the Health Department just today, last week, in Cass County, there were thirty-two positive cases. Today, there were two new ones, one of those was in Harrisonville, the other one was in Belton. Um, do you believe that it's okay to say that masks in city buildings are a voluntary thing now, as opposed to being a requirement? That's my first question, and then my second question has to do with, um, when do we want to, if we want to, when do we want to allow citizens to come back into council chambers and attend live? Right now, we're live streaming all of our meetings, so they're able to see these meetings as they're happening. They don't have to wait until tomorrow to view the recording. So, they're able to, you know, to see the meeting right away. I think we should always maintain social distancing, yet for, you know, a considerable period of time. I think we've said, I, did you say we had sixteen chairs in here? If we still limit the occupancy of the chairs? And we don't usually have more than sixteen people attending our council meeting anyway. But I just wanted to have some feedback from you on what your thoughts are about the masks and what your thoughts are about when we want to allow the general public to come back to attend our meetings. So, Alderman Milner, you got your?
I guess my question is, my first question will be how staff feel about it. Because they are the ones that are on the day-to-day line, happy to talk to people and doing all that. And I kind of think we almost need to take our direction from them.
Okay. All right, let's go around the room. We have, most of our staff is here. Eric, we'll start with you.
My people are still going to, they're still going to cover their face when they go out on calls. Like, most of the staffs had COVID or they're vaccinated. I mean, you're, you still have the skeptics out there about the vaccine. I have those people on staff. But like I said, as far as masking, I think that should be up to the person in sense. I mean, either way, it doesn't bother me. You know, it does get, it does get troublesome sometimes when you, oh, I forgot my mask and that kind of stuff. But as far as, I mean, today, whenever I went to minors down here, they used to have a glass partition in between their thing and their counter. They've removed it. It's like, COVID's over, party time, you know? So, I mean, I don't think we need to let our guard down about it, but, you know, starting to allow people back into the buildings and not having to wear a mask unless they, you know, close distance. That's my two cents.
Grant, what about Parks and Rec?
So, Parks and Rec has kind of been the oddball child because we, we're kind of in a different situation. So, you know, meetings, yes, we have our masks on when COVID was going on. But we also had members that were working out. They'd wear their mask and then they'd get to the cardio equipment and take it off. Or there'd be members that, you know, you know, refused to wear it altogether. But, yeah, staff-wise, a good amount of us are vaccinated. So, we're pretty comfortable not wearing masks in the office. Now, we, you know, we, it is kind of the thing where it's kind of common courtesy. If, if someone, you know, kind of wants to wear a mask and you're in a meeting, then, you know, sure, you know, what's the harm in it?
Okay.
That's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Jeremy?
So, a lot of my staff have some direct interaction with public similar to Grant's. So, I try to take their needs as much into account. I think they're all mask wary, as many of us are. Some of them have either had it, but they've had the vaccination. There also is the glass partition to protect them somewhat. I think the biggest thing here from a messaging standpoint is, one, a little bit of personal choice, but also the support to have, that you can have a choice, you know? So, we had an insurance meeting with people from outside, so Stafford and Stafford was in. And those are not people that I see on a day-to-day basis. And I was more comfortable wearing a mask in that situation, especially in the conference room where you're in close proximity. You know, I see Daniel regularly. It doesn't bother me as much. I can usually tell if he's not feeling well that, hey, I'm probably going to hang back. But I think it's really, you know, supporting them and, and what, you know, if they're uncomfortable, then I want to do what's necessary to make them feel comfortable. So, if they're going to wear a mask, then, you know, just like Grant said, it's not that big of a deal to me. It's not a political hill I'm going to die on. I'll put on a mask. So, you know, from, from their perspective, I think that there are times it is a bother to them as they get up from their desk and they're trying to, you know, they're working from a phone call to the desk and to the counter and trying to help people. And so, some of them definitely are probably going to choose not to. But I think that, you know, we've also got to continue to support those people that, because there's a reason that I haven't had a cold all year, and I think that's threefold. It's masking, it's hand washing, and that people are staying home when they're sick. And so, I want to continue to tell people to stay home when you're sick. I don't want it. I don't want if it's coronavirus, I don't want your regular cold.
Right.
So, I think that's just, you know, continued to be supportive of staff to say, hey, you're sick, stay home, please.
All right. Carl, what about your staff?
I think for the most part, Public Works staff, you know, they're working outside. So, yes, they are in contact with, with residents, but only when, you know, they're going to a residence home to answer a call, you know, they certainly can wear a mask. But, you know, from my observation, they're, they're not wearing masks because they're outside. You know, the guys at the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, they, they don't see anybody other than the occasional vendor wanting to sell them something or try to get them to use something. So, I, I would think, I would like my department to make it purely voluntarily. You know, if you want to wear a mask, fine. Me, Robert, and Cassie, we don't wear our masks in our rooms. So, if, if you want to make it voluntary, I, I would support that.
Okay. Jim?
I'm kind of in a different situation than the others. I have one staff member. I, we don't have the same interaction with public coming to the water bills and things like that. It's other staff that is, are doing a building inspection on a regular basis, et cetera. I probably meet more select with individual groups or individuals that are interested in certain aspects that I pertain to. I'm probably more cautious than others, and I may wear a mask more frequently than other folks might. But as folks are getting vaccinated and maybe have experienced COVID, I'm getting a little more comfortable with removal of the mask in certain situations. So, for me, I'll comply with mask requirements. And if it's choice, I may choose to wear a mask at the moment, choosing, definitely so.
Okay. All right. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I just, and, and what, what does the county's likely to stand?
Well, the county has never required masks and they still don't. They still don't. Brad, what about your, your staff?
Most of them, most of them are like the rest of the staff. If it's voluntary, they would be fine with voluntary. And I, I still think that they would probably feel comfortable if we're in a big meeting or if we're in the conference room with a bunch of people, that they'll probably feel comfortable putting a mask on. So, I think it's doing the, the optional. I do know that the, as the chief pointed out, also Chief Hofer said, he, he gave me some feedback on his as well. And he would rather his officers mask up when they're dealing with someone in the public. Maybe not as much back at the office as much as dealing with the public. So, I think the city could go to a, an optional, but if dealing with the public, we would want you to put your mask on when you're dealing with someone in the public and you can't social distance. As Jeremy pointed out, you know, the ladies up front, they do have a, a window up in front of them, but sometimes you get some people maybe screaming a little loud and obnoxious. They may want to go ahead and put theirs on. And the same thing with our emergency services and Public Works. And, and Parks, if they're dealing with somebody and they can't get a six-foot barrier and they don't feel comfortable that they put their mask on, just to keep them safe.
All right. So, is everybody in agreement then that we're going to move to a voluntary use of masks, personal discretion? Okay. What do you want to do about having the public come back in for public, for city meetings? Not just our meeting, but other board meetings as well, planning and zoning and board is owning adjustments and all that? Would you say?
I don't, you know, that, that's a tough one because we do have it available for everyone to watch. It would still probably be what limited seating even at that. No, that's a tough one.
And we don't have to implement both decisions at the same time. And we could say, we could say, okay, as of now, masks are voluntary. And we can make the decision later about bringing the public back in if that's what, if you're not ready for that and you prefer, and we can certainly do that.
I would, I would prefer to leave it the way it is right now.
Okay.
And then maybe later open it up.
And look at it again like first of June or something.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Those of you that feel like you want them to wait, is that because you're still fearful of the COVID or because we're enjoying our privacy?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We all ran long trans pairs.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Y'all know you're live, right?
I mean, I think it's, I, 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 I think, I think we all still have the fear for COVID. I mean, truly. Even like within our school districts, we're still requiring masks for the kiddos. And I think in the back of our minds too, we have to keep that perspective that within our own community, there are still requirements for masks.
Don't you think that also, it's like when Jeremy was talking about, you know, he knows Daniel and he interacts with Daniel all the time. We kind of feel the same way. We all, the eight or nine of us all interact with each other all the time. And the, the hesitation may be with interacting with the general public.
Well, and, and I don't think we would, and when I said, you know, both, for the simple fact that when I go out, I still wear my mask if I shop or in Walmart and things like that. And I think when you have a, a, an accumulation of people, even in our, in our world at the school, if we're in meetings, we are required to still wear our masks. And I think if we open it back up right now, I mean, I don't know. I guess, I just, it may still be too soon.
I think it's a factor of not knowing, you know, whether, you know...
And as the mayor pointed out, if we did open it up with the social distancing, there would only be with the sixteen chairs.
Well, and, and again, to go back to what the mayor said too, is it wasn't like we were packing the house out in here anyways.
Right, sure that, that's...
I think Daniel wanted to make a comment. Certainly.
So, I think one of the reasons that we are set up how we are right now, I didn't take the time to go back and pull up the email, but when we were making the decision about meeting back in this room, we reached out to Attorney Maurer and said, what's the best way to go about this? Should we limit seating? How would we go about limiting seating without infringing on people's rights to attend public city meetings? And that's one of the reasons that we made the decision that we did, was so that we didn't stop someone at the door and say, all right, you're the tenth person in, and then person number eleven is sitting there saying, well, hey, that's not fair. So, wanting to maintain fairness throughout our community. So, I think that's one of the things that is good to keep in mind. At the end of the day, we can make the decision that we make. But that is one of the things to kind of be mindful of is, is this going to be perceived as us infringing on a person's right to attend one of these meetings, regardless of if we would actually be doing that or not?
You mean by limiting?
Yes, by limiting the number of people.
Now, one of the ways, one of the ways that we can address that is we can follow the same process that we're following now, where we're saying, if you're on the agenda, you may attend in person, and then once your item is dealt with, we'll ask you to leave. Because then that frees up that, you know, additional seating for people that may be waiting. I mean, that's part of the reason why we started going live too, was so that people could actually have the experience of being in our meetings, even though they weren't physically in our meetings, so.
That's even why your work session is being live now, is so that residents that would normally sit out in the audience to watch you in work session would have the opportunity to still do that.
Right. So, I'm just going to go around the room. Alderman Dorhoff, what are your thoughts?
Honestly, I'm okay either way. Open it up and limit it, that's fine. You can still maintain the live stream at the same time. So, I'm, I'm good with the other consensuses.
Alderman Reese?
I'm good with it. I really followed very closely what Jeremy had to say. And making sure that we have the Plexiglas partitions up with rules in front. As long as those are up there, I'd be okay.
Okay. Alderman Franklin?
I think, I'm good with that.
You, you have already said that you prefer not to go back.
I, I would, but that's just my own personal thing.
Yeah, that's okay. All right.
I'm, I'm good, Madam Mayor, Board, that we open it back up and masks are optional. They can choose to wear a mask or not. I think that's a good idea. Like I said, I don't think we're going to pack the house out that it's going to make that big a deal. I like the fact that it's streaming now. I think a lot of people, a lot more people are probably watching it that way as well. So, yeah, I'm for it.
And you four, are you for it going forward after this meeting or are you for it at a later date?
I'm good right now. I'm, yeah.
Okay, so the four of you are good with going back as effective as of our next meeting? Okay. All right, now, this side of the room. Alderman Milner?
No, I, I, I think I'm for it. And I think, like Jeremy said, I think it's at, to the point where we can, for those who want to wear masks, still can. I just, I'm not sure about whether we should still try and distance or not within the seating capacity. I would still maybe like to see a little bit of space between people. I mean, we've done that within our own cells here.
Yeah.
So, if we want to open it up, I would still maybe like to see a little bit of, of...
Social distancing.
Social distancing, yeah.
So, maybe instead of two-chair in between, make it one-chair in between?
Yeah. I, I mean, I think that would be a fair statement.
Okay. Anything else from you? Alderman Turner?
I'm kind of with it being optional. I mean, everyone has their preference.
Yeah, we're talking about the meeting now, not the masks.
The meeting?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, the audience, right? Yeah.
You're okay with, with the public coming back into our meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. Apologies. Alderman Mills?
Oh, I'll, I'll go with, because I've had a lot of these same discussions. And I guess our conclusion was, what's one more month? We've been doing it a year. So, I guess I'll, and I'm going to be out of town two weeks, so we'll be here. So, it doesn't really matter what you do at the next meeting as far as I'm concerned. So, but if I was to say, I'd say, you know, what's another month? And let's, open it up in June would be my deal.
All right.
I could be okay with that as well.
Yeah. They're all shaking their heads. Okay. All right, so, let me see if I, let me see if I can summarize. The board has agreed that masks in city-owned buildings will be optional. Okay? And the board has also agreed that the public will be invited back to council chambers as of June, the first June meeting. And there will be, masks will be voluntary for the public. And there will be some social distancing set up within council chambers. Okay?
At Eric's discretion.
At, at discretion of staff and board. Okay?
Could we encourage masks?
Certainly.
Absolutely. We wouldn't have to say you have to wear a mask, but we could encourage.
Absolutely.
So, if I may, that is actually one of my questions. We have a sign on the door now that says, mask required. Do we want to just not have a sign and let people make their assumptions? Do we want to put up a sign that says masks encouraged? How, you know, what would be your direction on that?
I think that we should still, our, our message should still be masks are encouraged.
Okay.
You know, it's still a personal choice, but, you know, when the public is interacting with us, particularly when we're in a building and not outside like some of the staff, I think that masks are encouraged would be appropriate.
And I think some, some staff will definitely appreciate that. So, thank you.
Because that, you know, again, you know, when I started this conversation, it's... Because that, you know, again, you know, when I started this conversation, it's about taking care of staff and the public. And that makes it a little bit of a juggling act when you have to do both, so.
We already had people out here that didn't wear masks, even now when it's required. They didn't have it on. So, I mean, if they're not going to wear it, they're not going to wear it. Signs not going to stop them.
You know, and like Jeremy said, I mean, people are getting mask weary, and my concern is just that, you know, I just don't want people to let down their guard, because there's still so much unknown. We know a lot more than we did a year ago, but there's still a lot that we don't know, so. Yeah, yeah. Is there any other discussion for the good of the group tonight? Thank you all for staying late, I apologize for the late hour. If there's no further business, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion from Alderman Franklin, with a second from Alderman Reese, all in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?